Good evening. Thank you, sir. This is a meeting of the Planning Committee hosting a town hall to discuss good cause eviction legislation. We're going to start the meeting with a presentation immediately following roll call. Councilmember Porter.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn is absent. Councilmember Matavetski is also absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Present.
Chair Rathmo.
Present.
Thank you. So I'm going to kick this meeting over to Nate Hotchkiss, councilmember from District Four, who introduced the good cause eviction legislation and will be presenting on it this evening.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody who came out tonight. I think there's been a fair amount of conversation in the community about this legislation. There's also been a lot of speculation and I would say a little bit of misinformation. So I wanted to outline exactly what this is, what we have in front of us today. And then also, when we're done here, move into a question and answer period. So if you have questions, we'll do the best we can to answer them. And then if you just want to have a, following that, if you just have a statement or something in support or opposition to the legislation, we can do that after questions. And I am going to say if this goes to nine o'clock, that's my hard stop. I think three hours is enough for a town hall. But, so with that said, good cause eviction is a tenant protection. Just this past April 2024, it passed through the state. And, but it requires a local opt-in for each municipality. So we have to pass a local law saying that we opt into these tenant protections. There's three main features of them. The first is it protects tenants against unjustified or retaliatory evictions. The second is it offers the right to renew the lease at a reasonable rent. And the third is there is, it creates a limit to rent hikes at 10% or 5% plus the CPI. Right now, that is 8.45%. And that's updated every year with the, when the Consumer Price Index changes. There's a few different carve-outs that are exceptions or exemptions. So if any of these situations apply to a building or rental unit, the protections would not apply. So any units that are built within the last 30 years, starting in 2009, so any new development, the good cause protections don't apply. There's a few situations in Binghamton. I can think of like 50 Front Street, Twin Rivers, there's the ones that are in my district that I can think of. So, but that's kind of, that's pretty rare. So any, any public housing or anything that already has rent stabilization or rent control or different rent regulatory agreements, good cause protections don't apply. Any units that are in a co-op or condo, or there's manufactured housing units, the protections don't apply. And if it is a owner occupied building, so if you live, if your landlord lives within the building and you have less than 10, if you have 10 units or less than 11 units, the protections wouldn't apply in that situation either. There's two variable components that you're allowed to change with adopting or opting into good cause. The first is setting what a small landlord is defined as. The standard language from the state says that a landlord, or a small landlord has 10 or less units. But I, the law that I introduced sets it down to one unit. The justification for that is it closes an LLC loophole. So if there are multiple LLCs, they can be kind of defined as different landlords individually. So the protections would have less application to tenants in Binghamton. And the difference in tenants that would be covered under the law is 23% of tenants would be covered if we only, if we kept the state definition. But if we lower it to one unit, then 84% of tenants are covered. So I, since I'm introducing this to offer new protections to tenants, I think it's, the goal is to have it applied to as many situations as possible. Also, we can set a luxury threshold to 345% of the fair market rent. So if there is rent that is 345%, the fair market rate, if it's above that, the protections don't apply. I think for an efficiency apartment or a studio apartment, around $3,000 is what that, what that actually translates to in Brum County. What else, what else is there? So there's, you're only allowed to evict if there's a good cause. And those are defined within the law itself. So a good cause to evict is for a non-payment of rent is, I'm sure most of you know, that's the number one reason for eviction. So that this law doesn't change anything with non-payment at all. If there's any lease violations, you can still evict. There's no extra protections. If a landlord wants to recover the unit or use it for personal use, good cause doesn't change that as a grounds for eviction. Additionally, if there's any nuisance violation of the law, those are also grounds to evict. And lastly, if the owner intends to demolish or is taking the property off the market, those are also grounds for eviction. So I think that's, as a broad overview, I think that's a pretty good starting point. If there's people that have questions and want to come forward about how this works in practice or why we're proposing it, I'm, I'm welcome to take those questions at this point. So if anybody wants to come down.
I do want to note, so this is not like a regular public comment period. So we can interact with questions that are shared or proposed. We can interact with statements. Comments will still be cut to five minutes.
Kenneth Brown, Dr. Semen.
Oh, thank you. That doesn't necessarily apply for town halls where you don't have to state your name and that you're in the city.
All right. So my question is, you said the 345%. If it's above that, it doesn't get affected. Is there a clause within the law that stops people from being able to immediately raise rent to that type of level?
Just specifically with like the rent hike at the beginning. That, I mean, there's not many units that are 345% above fair market rent, but there's no beyond just capping rents at 8.45%. That's, that's the only thing that would stop.
Okay.
Oh, I, that makes me think of something else. Do you have anything else?
No, that's the only question right now.
Yeah. The other, the other piece that this reminds me of is there is, it's kind of a soft rent cap rather than a hard rent cap. So if there is any, the idea here is to prevent against arbitrary rent hikes or price gouging. But if there are maintenance, insurance, tax increases that would, you'd need to raise rent to just cover your own expenses, those are acceptable. And I think that hasn't been, that hasn't always been represented in how people are talking about this. So I just, that reminded me to throw that piece in there.
There is a sign up sheet posted by the entrance, not for comments, but for anyone who would like updates and follow up as this progresses.
My name is Elaine, and I do represent Democrats in a very positive way. Yes, the landlord can increase the rent, but I think it's only 5% and it's every couple of years. Not when they feel like it, but every two years. I believe that is signed into law where they can only do 5%. But I agree, raising the rent, price gouging needs to stop. When whole families are shoved out of an apartment into motel room, when is, where's the justice for them? You know, that isn't fair to take babies, toddlers, adolescents, teenagers, and young moms and parents and put them in a motel room. Where's the justice for that or even for the pregnant woman? They say that they're pro-life. If you're pro-life, you prove it by your actions. You stick up for those that are more vulnerable than you are, the disabled, the elderly, who don't deserve to be put out of an apartment. And the other issue is if a tenant is good about paying their rent every month and they pay straight cash for over two years, there needs to be rights to protect those tenants. If they don't create a problem with the law, if they're not vandalizing the place or setting fire to it, they're not causing trouble and they're just good about paying straight cash rent every month, regardless of their challenges, because maybe they're born disabled, whatever. They should honor that by treating them with dignity and respect at least. If they want them to go, handle it in a good way, help them find an affordable apartment and then move them out. You know, don't cause hard feelings. My former landlord caused very hard feelings. I'll never trust him ever again. And that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. So, yeah. If there's any, I really want to try to bring questions forward. If there's any specific questions that people have, so that we can all hear, hear what people are thinking about and also provide answers.
My question is, when you talk about eviction for nuisance, if you have a tenant that moves in additional people, is that considered a nuisance? And, and if you have a tenant that doesn't take care of your property on a regular basis, you're calling code on them? Is that a nuisance? I mean, can we evict them for those reasons? You have a no pack clause?
I mean, I'm assuming that that would be in violation of a lease that you'd have, that you wouldn't allow new or people that aren't on the lease to move in.
So if you have a lease and they're in violation of the lease, that's legal right for eviction?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm a local landlord, it doesn't work that way. Hi, I'm a local landlord and I have some questions for you. Causing a nuisance is here. Now, what is your definition of causing a nuisance?
What comes to mind or what I hear about is if someone is like playing loud music that's disturbing their neighbors at 3:00 AM, something to that effect. But that's, that's the one that comes to mind immediately.
So how is that different than a tenant violating a lease that that's listed in the lease? And as a landlord, I brought these folks to court before and I've had stacks of police calls with no satisfaction in court. So my only justification is to end the lease. Give them a 30-day notice on a month-to-month, if they've been there over a year, a 60-day notice. I'm not really sure how this is any different and gonna give, I see where it's going to protect tenants more. But from a landlord's standpoint, you're controlling our properties much more detailed if that's the only definition you can give me of a nuisance.
So the language of the law, specifically that clause related to nuisance, the tenant is committing or permitting a nuisance in such housing accommodation or elsewhere in the building or on the real property, or is maliciously or by reason of gross negligence substantially damaging the housing accommodation or causing substantial damage elsewhere. Or the tenant's conduct is such as to interfere with the comfort and safety of the landlord or other tenants or occupants of the same or another adjacent building or structure. That is one of the 10 allowable within this legislation, reasons that eviction can still be moved.
And what timeline is that? Is that within a week, a month, a day, five years?
I'm not sure what you're asking. Timeline for what?
A tenant today that is disturbing three other tenants in the building. So I'm getting calls at 2:00 in the morning from loud music. And it happens again tomorrow. But then it doesn't happen for a week, but then it doesn't happen for two weeks, but then it's consistently happening every single day. In your law, are you proposing a timeline that says this tenant, you know, within a certain timeframe? Because I have tenants that have been terrible nuisance tenants that I can't get rid of, right? And their recourse, the neighbors that are being disturbed, call the police and the police tell them, call the landlord. What am I supposed to do? Call the landlord and have landlord evict them? And we cannot evict them, right, on these cases? Our only thing we can do is end the lease, terminate the lease.
There is no timeline within the legislation as it's presented, but this good cause eviction does not impact your rights under existing law.
But you're adding additional barriers to us to be able to do our jobs and help those people that want to live in these buildings and live and enjoy these buildings. And we're trying to protect them, but now you're hindering that ability with this law, in my opinion.
I think, so this wouldn't affect how you'd normally do a nuisance filing in any way. I think, I'm pretty sure that's, that's accurate. But I know you're saying that you have an issue with nuisance filings, but this doesn't, this doesn't either address your concerns around those, but it also doesn't.
It does affect the termination of tenancy.
Right. So if I understand your representation, you would pursue a nuisance violation, not be, in your words, satisfied under the law by being able to pursue repossession of the property. And so this doesn't impact that. But if you were unable to prove in a court or in a hearing that you've, that a tenant has committed a nuisance toward a warrant of eviction, that has nothing to do with the law itself.
They'll have the right to terminate their tenancy at any given time.
I'm saying it is still your responsibility to prove that they have committed a nuisance or violated aspects as you're presenting. You have about one minute left.
Right. A judgment issue.
Right.
There's nothing in the law. Issue is not so much, but the judgment issue of dealing with the law. So I don't understand where the good cause is, is not hindering.
Can I?
Depends on the situation, but then you come down to a judge.
Yes.
And when you, when you get to court, you'd have legal aid who's defending a lot of tenants. And they have that right and they should have that right, right? For when things are wrong and are right, but when things are good and in good faith, you're doing the right thing, right? And the person is causing an issue. And now your habitability is a question because something is a little wrong in the apartment.
Again, that's a judgment issue.
Again, a judgment issue, right? So, but we're adding another layer is what I'm looking at.
So you're still, I think.
Go ahead, Robert.
I'm thinking you still are in the right to evict the person.
Absolutely.
So therefore.
I'm with you.
So I think.
But the judge has the final call.
And just what you just said.
Right.
That's the judge making a final call. So if the judge is not agreeing with what you're saying, then it leaves you stuck, doesn't it? It doesn't, it's not what the, it's not the good cause issue. The judge not doing his job. So what you're coming, unfortunately, you're coming to us.
Yeah, I understand. Right. Right. But what I'm saying is, you know, there's, there's really no clear definition of, you know, a nuisance in the law.
I mean.
There's a lot, there's a lot of things that are very vague in this law.
No more vague than in the current landlord-tenant law. So and I think my concerns, and I think a lot of the landlord concerns in here, and we're going to hear it probably 50 more times, which is fine, is we have the letter of the law and we have all of these criteria which can be met to evict somebody. You have violated your lease, whether it's smoking the apartment or a pet in the apartment or extra people in the apartment, 10 million reasons, you know, you're violating your lease. You're, you're a nuisance. We have police reports that are this thick about this tenant, whatever. That's the letter of the law. In practice, what has happened is the most common reason for eviction is non-payment of rent. And then even if you're doing, if you're, if your non-payment case fails or your nuisance payment, your nuisance case fails, what do almost all the eviction lawyers suggest you do? Also terminate tenancy and file a 30-day or 90-day, right? And so we all do that. And that is the law in practice. So I think it has saved the city court system from having to actually adjudicate many of these issues. Because in practice, what are you going to do? You want to get rid of this tenant? You might file a nuisance eviction. You'll file a non-payment if you can, but you're also going to terminate tenancy based on just time, as soon as you can. This, and this is a concern, that the, the actual nuisance issues and lease violation issues have largely not been really taken to their necessary conclusions because we've always had that as a backstop. The judges know that, the lawyers know that, landlords know that, tenants know that. It's, it's, so really, we like to get rid of you because you're a nuisance, but we're also just going to terminate your tenancy. So this legislation does take away that mechanism. And we're going to have to now live in a system where nuisance issues and lease violation issues are, do need to be adjudicated by city court system as the primary means of, the primary means of eviction after non-payment. It's going to make the process a little bit sloppier. It's going to require more detailed hearings, I think, that might be longer hearings, where balance of, of evidence and facts are going to have to be taken. And I, that's going to happen. It's going to be a new normal that we're going to have to adjust to as landlords and that the city court judges are going to have to adjust for. It's not, it's, the law is designed to not make, is designed to make these, you know, eviction process less streamlined and to, you know, have this clash of, of actual issues without this, this, this backstop that we've been using. So I hear your concerns. I understand your concerns. They're concerns I've had, but
So with that being said, why would we pass this law? I mean, if those are, if everybody is concerned about the same thing.
The landlord is concerned, I'm concerned. But it's that, it's, it's, it's that mechanism against the, against rapacious landlords, against increase, against rent increases that are not justified, against gentrification that is, that is threatening affordable housing. So it's a balancing test, I think, for me, and I, you know, I want to speak for all my council colleagues, but it's that balancing test. Are the protections we're creating, you know, adding to or helping inequity? So.
I understand. That's why I think this law shouldn't be passed. Thank you very much, though.
I'm just saying, your, your concerns are not falling on deaf ears or any, it's a valid, you know, this, the procedure of evictions and how these things are going to be changing.
Right. So the, so the timeline of 115 days from start to finish now becomes six months, eight months, a year to end the lease and, you know, notice and get somebody.
That's fair.
That's not fair to the landlord, but that's.
No, no, I don't think it's fair to say that that's what will happen.
When you muddy the waters, there's going to be a lot more, you know, 30, 60, 90 days longer, in my opinion. Thank you for listening.
How you doing? How you doing? Mike Reed, I'm a landlord. So I think a lot of what's going on, a lot of what Jim was saying is that under current law, the way things are right now, the way things are right now, in my opinion, I think it's nearly impossible to win a nuisance eviction. I have personally been to court with nuisance stuff. Okay, I had 16 police reports of extreme domestic violence over the course of five months. It was almost considered irrelevant. And so because the nuisance, the burden of proof on the landlord is so high with a nuisance eviction, under current law, you did speak a little bit to propose changes or something like that, but I don't know, I mean, I don't know what authority you guys have to impose changes in the way judges rule on eviction hearings in court. But we do the holdover evictions because the burden of proof on the landlord for the nuisance evictions is so high. And in these cases, when you can't win a nuisance eviction, not only does the landlord suffer, but the quality paying tenants also suffer. I personally have a situation right now where I have a nuisance tenant, okay? I've been to court twice to evict her for non-payment. And I've basically lost both times because legal aid comes in and makes claims about habitability issues, all of which the tenant created. And both times I went to court, I made ginormous concessions on rent that was owed because in so many words, the court told me, I'm not going to win this eviction. The tenant disturbed, it's a three-unit building. This tenant disturbs, has disturbed every other occupant of the building since she's lived there. I have lost, I literally just had somebody move out last month. They said, you are the best landlord we've ever had, but we cannot take living next to this woman anymore. I have a shared laundry room. She causes fights in the laundry room constantly. She leaves her stuff there for hours and sometimes days at a time. And if anybody moves her stuff, she gets verbally abusive. And yet, if anybody else's stuff sits there for five minutes, she'll throw it on the floor. And the tenants call me sometimes at midnight or 2:00 in the morning and they say, fix this. And I say, I don't know what I can do about it. I'd say, call the police when things, if she's been verbally abusive or made threats, call the police. The police have been there. If I take this woman to court for nuisance eviction, I have no doubt in my mind, I will have no chance to win this nuisance eviction, okay? The tenants are afraid to come forward in these situations because she's very, she's abusive and intimidating. And, and I've lost good tenants over her and she just, both of these other tenants I have in the building, they're both, they pay perfectly. They don't bother me for anything. They are amazing. They're young kids. They're like, they're all, all of them are in their early twenties, but they pay perfectly. But they're afraid of this woman. They are afraid of her. And I can't, I mean, and I have no doubt I will not, I would not win a nuisance eviction to get rid of her. My only, my only, and she has a two-year lease. And so my only option currently to relieve myself and the other tenants of this problematic tenant is, is a holdover eviction. And, and I'm gonna, we're gonna lose that, right? And, and not only, like I said, if I, if I can't evict her that way, I will suffer, but other, the good civil, law-abiding, paying tenants will also suffer. And, and so like I said, I just, I just think there's a little bit of ideal, like the real world enforcement of a nuisance eviction is, is, the burden of proof on the landlord is so high that it's just not practical. Unless dramatic changes are imposed, and I don't know, I don't know what power there is to impose those changes because judges are not going to want to, we're going to get into he said, she said, he beat me up, that was my boyfriend, he moved out, this changed, that changed. I mean, we're going to have, we're going to have a laundry list of excuses and lack of accountability from the tenants about why the nuisance is not their fault or baloney about how the nuisance issue has been resolved when it hasn't been.
You have one minute left.
What's that?
You have one minute.
Okay, that's, that's the concern. I just, and really, I don't even have a question. I just want to make sure, I just want to express my feelings and opinions to you guys about the real world enforcement of the nuisance eviction and who will actually suffer. Not only will the landlord suffer, but the good, a lot of good tenants will suffer from this too. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Robert Russell and I'm a landlord on the south side of Binghamton. I have three houses and five units. According to this law, I would be a large landlord, but I view this very much as a bomb and, you know, pop operation. I've only been doing it a short while. I take a lot of pride in my units. There, we put a lot of money into them. I have great tenants. Never once during, I think I've had 12 tenants over the past 15 years and never once have I ever had to evict a person, all right? Nor would I want to. I've heard horror stories about landlords trying to evict and it costs a lot of money on upwards to $2,500 or more. That could eat up one's, you know, profits for the year on that unit. So I want to avoid eviction. One of the things that really confuses me about this whole thing, the New York State Attorney General, she has a website there all for, you know, tenants and landlords. There's a extensive documentation of all the terms about when you can evict and when you cannot. Personally, that's the law right now in our state. I see it very pro-tenant, but because I never evict, it's, you know, I I think hopefully I'll never have to come to that. The thing that confuses me about this bit, this, it isn't a bill, it's a law that you were considering right now. And this is my own opinion. But, um, I think that they're confusing two things. On the one hand, you were talking about eviction. And on the other hand, you were talking about not renewing a lease. I see those as two totally different things. I have a lease with a tenant. It's a contract, you know, between them and I. And it's a relationship. It's a business relationship with a beginning date and a end date. Now, uh, during that course of that lease, I can't raise the rent. There are, there are various expectations that are made of me and of them. But at the end of that lease, especially if I give them a three-month notice, which is a law, if they've lived in there two or more years, you give them a three-month notice. If, like, if it's a nuisance individual that is just not responsible with the property, and I could go on and on about why they may not be, uh, I want the option of not renewing the lease. That's different from evicting the person. I feel that it's very different from evicting the person. It is a option. They may be paying the rent every month, but I want that option not to renew that lease. You know, as a landlord, there isn't a lot of, there's fewer and fewer benefits in it for me. I mean, uh, I look at my taxes. On a good year, I net one-third of what I gross. A lot of them, people think, oh, well, you charge, you know, $1,200 for an apartment. Wow, you're making a lot of money. I'll, I'll only net one-third of that on a good year. And on a bad year, when I'm, uh, have a lot of repairs or, or I'm doing major improvements, I'll only net a quarter of that. And then I gotta pay taxes on that third or on that quarter, right? All the while, I have to worry, you know, I shovel the snow, I mow the lawns. My wife and I, we do the gardening. Uh, we keep our properties looking very nice, but I have to worry about a lawsuit. If a person slips on the steps, uh, I have to worry about, will someone stop paying rent? So I will be forced to have to evict them. These are my concerns.
You have about one minute left.
And, and so these are my opinions, my comments. I will go back to this one issue, though, you know, to you, Nate, about, um, the difference between evicting a person during a lease and not renewing the contract, the lease, at the end of the lease. I still think those are two very different things. And you want to deprive us of the latter. Okay.
Yeah, so if you want an explanation of why, why that exists in this law, it's that the non-renewal is a, it's not a de facto eviction, but it's also a form of displacement and creates more housing instability. So that's, that's why that exists.
Well, so if you think about it, the, we have a contract. The tenant can, uh, opt out whenever they want to. They can move out of my apartment whenever they want to. Maybe, uh, you know, but if I choose, I want them no longer to have this contract with them. I don't have a choice. So it's a one-way thing. The tenant has all the power to stay, and I have no power to ask them to leave at the end of their lease. It just doesn't make any sense. I'm not a, I'm not a, like, attorney. I know nothing about contract law. But it seems like to me, when you have a lease, when you have a contract between two people and there's an end date, you renegotiate whether or not you even want to have a lease again. And, and I think it's a good thing in a way because I wouldn't do it lightly to ask a person what to leave. In all the 15 years out of my 12 tenants, I've only had one time that I didn't want to renew the lease. And it was for a list of nuisance things that you would not believe. But, uh, I'm just actually saying that to ask a person to leave is a risk because you may get somebody that's worse.
Your five minutes is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, my name is Rachel Miller. I'm an attorney for landlords. So I have actual questions. Um, I'm wondering if the council got any sort of numbers from Binghamton City Court to establish how many holdover warrants are, are executed?
I have, I have a pretty good spreadsheet. I haven't gone all the way through it, but I, I think there's, it, it represents the minority of cases that are in eviction filings. I wanted to venture to guess that it's about, about 10%. And then non-payment is probably around 90%.
So-
Do you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers.
Okay, I'm just checking.
I'm not, I'm not putting forth this law.
I know, I, I was just, if someone else had that data, I'd love to look at it.
No, so 10% of cases through Binghamton City are holdover, correct? What your rough estimate is?
If, if that, yeah.
And did anyone speak to anyone from the city of Ithaca that has already passed this?
Yep.
Yes, we are doing our due diligence and talking to people.
Who did you speak to in Ithaca?
Different, different people and different lawmakers.
In what groups?
Council.
Do you have any names or any groups that you've spoken to in Ithaca, city of Ithaca?
Um, we can discuss that off, off here, but-
Okay, but what about Rochester? Has anyone spoken to anyone in Rochester? These are municipalities that have passed this law. You guys are aware of that, correct?
Yes, when we are doing our due diligence.
And I'm wondering what that due diligence was, who you spoke with?
And I said, we can discuss that off record. That's fine.
Okay, when can we discuss it off record?
You can, you can look my number right up on, um, the city council website. That's fine.
Okay.
I think also, just to add context to that question, because I understand what you're getting at. This law was very recently passed. And so the conversations are in the works and have been had. The data to represent outcomes isn't presently available.
Exactly. So why is Binghamton trying to push this through when cities like Ithaca and Rochester have only had this recently and don't have enough information to tell you how it is working? What's the rush here in Binghamton?
Okay.
You have a better answer, too.
Yeah, so there's, we have like a wealth of data to suggest that there's a ton of housing instability and that rents are not affordable for the population, as well as, uh, there's been a lot of it. There's no database for this, and I wish there was, but there's no, there's been a lot of anecdotal information about the, the rent hikes that have priced people out. So that's been my justification for pursuing this.
How is limiting, how is limiting a landlord's right to control their property going to open up more housing?
It doesn't reduce additional units. The opportunity and protection within this legislation does prevent displacement for arbitrary reasons. And so by preventing that displacement, we're reducing the number of households who are forced to access homeless services and thus increasing the number of individuals who are experiencing homelessness in our community already. So it's a preventive measure. It is not a strategy to produce more units, although that is something this council is also committed to.
Well, you're, you're gonna prevent landlords from even renting from low-income individuals because they know that now their rights are limited and they cannot get tenants out.
I think I want to represent, again, just very clearly, so a couple of things. I do want to make sure that we're factually considering what is being represented when you're speaking about it being nearly impossible to evict a tenant or when it's being represented how difficult it is to evict a tenant. And if you do want to take notes regarding data, there were 960 evictions filed in Binghamton City Court in 2023. 628 of those, so 65% resulted in a successful warrant of eviction. 840 evictions had been filed in Binghamton City Court by the time this law was introduced in early December. And 513%, so 61% had successfully resulted in a warrant of eviction. So what is actually true is that the majority of evictions filed in Binghamton City Court already result in repossession and the displacement that we're hoping to support prevention of.
Um, so I've got some further questions. The exceptions, is student housing an exception?
Only if it's a dormitory that's being maintained by a, a higher education institution.
So an individual that owns a house that rents to students, they're not included in this exception, correct?
Yeah, if it meets all the other criteria.
So what happens when students go over and stay? How do they get them out?
How do they, they'll, they'd have to do in an eviction filing like anything else. Are you saying if they, if they wanted to renew their lease and they were up on rent and there wasn't any other issues with the tenant?
Mr. Hachekis, have you talked to any, any landlords that rent to students?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're aware that when they rent, they rent a year in advance. So in June of 2025, these kids have to be out and the new crop is in July 2025. You're aware of that, correct?
Yep.
So how do they get them out? If the tenants don't, those students don't leave and they have a new lease, that now they're going to breach that contract and be liable for money damages, how do they get those students out?
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, last, next question. Has anyone discussed this with the city of Binghamton? Any of the judges? Are any of the judges here? Judge Vaughn in here? No. Has any, have you discussed the infrastructure and whether Binghamton City Court can handle the amount of nuisance hearings and evictions that you are going to put on that court? Has anyone talked to Binghamton City Court?
No, I haven't.
Okay. And Mr. Hachekis, you've mentioned loud music is a nuisance. Have you been to court before to hear a nuisance action?
I spent six months observing eviction court.
Okay, I'll tell you, I've done nuisance actions. I have never seen a nuisance action be granted for loud music.
Five minutes is up.
So- And last, last question. Um, what about a sale of property? Is that an exception?
No.
No, this, a sale of property is not an exception.
If it's off the market.
If they're removing it from the market.
If they're removing it from the market.
Then-
And has anyone talked to the Binghamton or the Broom County Realtors Association about this?
Yep.
Okay.
I wonder if it might, would it- Uh, just very quickly, I wonder if it might be helpful, and this isn't necessarily directly for you, Rachel, if you're all set, but, um, the 10 reasons that are considered grounds for removal of tenants. So when we say that this doesn't prohibit a landlord from moving forward with taking repossession, very quickly, I won't read all of the words, but A, the tenant has failed to pay rent and is due and owing. B, the tenant is violating a substantial obligation of their tenancy or breaching any of the landlord's rules and regulations governing the premises. C, the tenant is committing or permitting a nuisance, I read this earlier, maliciously or by reason of gross negligence substantially damaging the property, property or interfering with the comfort and safety of the landlord or other tenants. D, so this would be four of the 10, um, the tenant is in violation of or causes a violation of law and the landlord is subject to civil or criminal penalties. That landlord can pursue eviction. The tenant is using the property for illegal purposes. The tenant has unreasonably refused the landlord access to the housing accommodation for a number of listed reasons. The landlord is seeking to recover possession of a housing accommodation for their own personal use and occupancy or for the personal use and occupancy of a number of family members. The landlord is seeking to demolish the housing accommodation. The landlord is seeking in good faith to withdraw a housing accommodation from the housing rental market. And the tenant fails to agree to a reasonable changes to lease at renewal, including increases in rent that are not reasonable. So those are the 10 grounds identified in this law wherein eviction can still be pursued.
So where was it that included a sale of a property?
If you take it off the market.
Or a recent purchase of a property?
Only if you take it off the market was the clarification that we added.
So when someone buys a property, they cannot evict who's there?
Correct.
And when someone sells a property, they cannot evict who's there?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi, um, so there seems to be a lot of fear, and I think it's based on a level of confusion. So my questions are to seek clarification to see if that helps. So from my understanding, all good causes that are current, that a landlord can employ to enact a lawful eviction, those are still standing, correct? All of these good causes, violation of nuisance, which, um, nuisance, which can be subjective, um, non-payment of rent. Landlords still have their rights to follow the due process of law and file the paperwork and appear before a judge. Nothing about this clause is impeding good cause of eviction. Is that correct? As stated within the documents, right? Okay. So, um, it seems like it would be beneficial for landlords to maybe understand their rights so that they realize that their rights are still being protected. Where can they have access to this information? Do you guys know where a landlord will be able to revisit what their existing rights are so that they can be at ease at the fact that they still have those rights?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer for you right now. I mean, it would be in real property law in this state.
It would probably be online, definitely.
Yeah, I would point them to Real Property Law, chapter, chapter 50, Article 6A, which is the opt-in adoption for this legislation.
Perfect, that's perfect. Um, so my understanding is that as long as the landlord is respecting the tenant's rights and they have a good cause of eviction, they can still continue to follow that process as it stands today, before this clause even being passed.
I'm not sure I understand that question.
Um, sorry. So, I'm going off the top of my head. So it's very specific here that good causes of eviction are still being honored is what I'm trying to point out. Because there seems to be a confusion that landlords are gonna lose their rights and not be able to evict people. But this is more of a protection of tenants' rights. So for example, some of the things that landlords won't be able to evict people for are unjustified or retaliatory actions. So as long as, as a landlord, you're not doing this, then there really isn't too much of an issue. This is more to protect tenants This is more to protect tenants from unjustified behavior from landlords who are not doing the right thing. If as a landlord, you are following everything that you need to, you still have the protection under the law that you currently have to try to pursue an eviction, correct?
I'd say mostly, but what we've been hearing is that there's one, there's certain avenues that are regularly pursued in lieu of like the, how you typically address a nuisance case, I guess.
Okay.
So. It's not, it's not being.
Holdover opportunity.
Right, but they would still be able to appear in front of a judge and present all their burden of proof, all of their evidence, just as it is now. Like this is not stopping them from being able to do that. They still have those rights.
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's really important to clarify. I don't see anywhere in this clause where landlords are losing any kind of rights. Tenants are gaining rights to make sure that they're being evicted evicted outside of a good cause. And I think that that's a very important clarification here because I think that's where the fear is stemming from. Like if you're a good landlord and you're not trying to retaliate against your tenants in any kind of way because, you know, they told you to fix something and you don't want to fix it or anything like that. And you don't really have anything to worry about here. I'm not understanding where the fear is and I think that that's where the clarification needs to be. I think it's really important that that's delineated, that everybody understands what rights do landlords still have? And what rights and that they're gaining. I think it's really important for, I think if anything, this will improve the relationships between tenants and landlords. Because tenants will have a sense of safety that their landlords will honor and landlords will continue to do. If they are doing the right thing, they will continue to do the right thing and build upon this relationship with tenants. I'm not understanding. Thank you. I'm not understanding the fear and confusion here. I think this is more for an imbalance in the power dynamic when a landlord is in power because they own the property and the tenant has less power because they're renting and can be subjected to unfair practices. So as long as you're not doing that, as long as you're not abusing your power as a landlord, you really don't have anything to fear here.
Your five minutes are up.
Hello. But first I'd like to shout out my landlord because he's great. And I'd like to say that because when my landlord rented to me, did his due diligence through his background and all of that stuff, right? He also made a great effort for me and he wasn't he wanted to make sure he got the person there. And he even included me situation with meeting the tenant he was going to move into the building. And that resulted into a really good relationship with me and my neighbor and also with me and my landlord. So he did a great job at making sure that the tenants he got was to his standards and what he wanted. And he's a great landlord. If I have a leak, as soon as I call him, he's over within two days. If I have an issue, as soon as I call him, there's no, no situation where he couldn't, he couldn't make it to fix the situation. And with that, that means if there's a leak and you don't tend to the leak, guess what? Your apartments get molded up. That's not my situation because my landlord makes sure that he comes to take care of the situation the timely matter. As far as good cause, I'm a housing advocate. I've been doing this work for more than three years. I've been knocking on doors for more than three years. Good cause is not something that somebody made up and it happened like it was just that, it was a big fight. I was part of that fight in Albany, which was one at the level where it wasn't opted in for local situations. Now I'm back here having to fight again so it can opt in locally. I did write something so that way I could stay on topic. So thank you all for coming together tonight to support, to the ones that came to support. That it is vital for the future of our community. We are here because we believe in fairness, stability and justice for all. Good cause legislation is a critical step towards protecting tenants and ensuring that no one can lose their home without a legitimate reason. It's designed to stop abusive practices like holdover evictions, which some landlords use to unfairly displace their tenants. Raising rents beyond affordability, retaliating against renters who assert their rights of forcing or forcing out families simply to maximize their properties. I had someone actually contact me yesterday that their landlord has shut off their hot water, has not come to, their heat is not working. And it's what, January? We're in wintertime and because he's trying to forcefully push her out her place. She has not paid her rent because those things are not being fixed. She does have an account where this money is available for the landlord when the landlord does make the, the situation better. For the past three years, like I said, I've been knocking on doors, talking to tenants and hearing firsthand how these practices hurt real people. Parents struggling to keep their kids in the same school, seniors unsure of where they'll go next because the rent was raised so high. Family who work hard every day but still find themselves at the mercy of unfair housing practices. These stories are why we fight for good cause protections. While we made great strides, right? We still have work to do. Passing this legislation at the local level remains the goal. It is one we must continue to push together. Other cities and states have already passed similar protections. Let me, well, I said last time, New Jersey has had a good cause in their state for over fifty years and is working for them. New Jersey also is the fastest of new development of housing. It's working for them. People have done their research as well. Nobody didn't just come up here and say, hey, this is what we're going to do. People have talked to municipalities, people have talked to government officials, people have talked to other activists, people have talked to a lot of and tenants, which are important, the people that are actually paying their money to live in these places. I also want to take, take a moment to thank Nate Hotchkiss for his incredible leadership in this fight. I know it's brave of you to bring this legislation up because I know Binghamton does not like change. So thank you so much for caring about the tenants in this city and actually putting forth a legislation that will protect families for further pushing up, pushing them and crowding them in these hotels.
You have forty-five seconds.
Thank you. We may not be there yet, but we are closer than ever. Now is the time to double down our efforts. Let's keep knocking on these doors, sharing stories and showing up for our neighbors. Together we can ensure good cause legislation can become law because the people in this city is definitely banking on it. I am tired of hearing single mothers cry, see the senior citizens saying I only have a certain amount of income and I can't renew my lease because my landlord has raised my rent a hundred dollars. So please pass good cause and I think it's going to further protect our tenants and also take out certain situations where families don't have to pack up in the hotel because now a landlord wants to rent a property to students. Thank you.
There's a, I'm just looking at all the people that are sitting on the ground. I think there's like orange chairs around the corner in that, that closet. I think those should be utilized if you don't want to sit on the ground. Thanks.
Can I go? Can you hear me? Is this thing working? Okay. Oh.
It's already.
Is it working now? There we go. Can you hear me now? Green, okay, got it. Good, thanks. All right, so my name's Shannon Potts. I'm a landlord on the west side. We don't make, we break even pretty much. A lawsuit having to do an eviction sinks us for the year, okay? Ninety percent of my tenants have been great. My rents are low. I like to keep my rents low. I like to try to be a positive influence. I congratulate you and applaud you on attempting to fix this, this issue. Because it's an important issue on both sides, okay? However, I advise you very, very strongly that to rush into anything is very likely to create real problems. Because I can't afford for you to get it wrong, okay? I can't afford it and my tenants can't afford it. And the effect will be that the rents will go up for everybody in my group anyways, okay? Because I have to protect myself, okay? My tenants generally live better within their apartments than I do in my own house. For example, for the last year, I've been nursing a water heater, trying to get every last bit of life out of it. And a month ago it stopped. And I didn't have the money to replace our own water heater, okay? So this fiction that small landlords are rolling in money is just that, fiction, okay? I hold on to those properties so that I can help the community, so I can be a positive influence in the community. But if you come in and interfere, you're going to remove my ability to be reactive in a positive way, okay? Now regarding this law, this law is entirely in error. You're saying that a small landlord is a landlord who has one unit. However, if that landlord lives in an apartment building with ten other units, that is also a small landlord. Based on the numbers in your law here, okay? The fair market value is for inefficiency is eight hundred and fifty-five dollars times ten is eight hundred and fifty, or excuse me, eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars every month in. I have two, I have three two-family apartments and a house. My income, if I was charging for market, excuse me, fair market value would be sixty-eight hundred dollars. So I'm making two thousand dollars less than somebody with a large apartment building. And yet you consider us both small landlords. That's a legal fiction, my people. That's a legal fiction, okay? And it's no basis for a law. All right, you want to talk about the fear? Yeah, the fear is there because the last speaker asked about where's the fear from? The fear comes from the idea of having to evict somebody. Like the gentleman who spoke earlier, I have no interest in causing anyone any grief. Because if I have to evict them, it's going to sink me for the year easily, all right? It's in my best interest to treat my tenants as best as I can afford to. Do not come in and create problems for me. I point out to you that the larger firms, okay? Who might be a little less responsive, if you noticed, the last speaker spoke about how responsive her landlord is. You get that sort of responsiveness from people who are your neighbors, who are your owners, excuse me. You don't get that from the large firms, I assume. I don't really know. But assuming you don't get that from the large firms, why do you have a carve-out for these large firms? They're the ones creating the problem. They're the ones that are buying things up. I mean, I guess depending on your perspective, the, they're either creating the problem or their solution. Because frankly, things are a lot better than in Binghamton than they were twenty years ago. No question about it. No question about it. No matter what side of the aisle you're on, okay?
You have one minute left.
But I caution you to be aware of the impact to small landlords. This is a legal fiction. If you're going to do this thing, at the very least, make sure that small landlords are protected and you change that definition. They're saying that the reasoning they're giving in this, in this document for doing that is because of something about LLCs and stuff. Change the law regarding LLCs. Don't throw it down on the, on the, on the, on the landlords, small landlords. That's, that's silly. You're saying that you, you know, enough said, so. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yep. The, so. Just to address it kind of quickly, I can't change that part of the law because it's the state law, but I can change the, the definition of the size of a small landlord. So that's.
That would be much appreciated.
Okay.
Hello? Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Great. My name is Erin Meechah. I'm a property owner in the city of Binghamton. I'm also a New York State Real Estate agent. I'm also a Broom County legislator representing District Ten, which now encompasses the east side of Binghamton. I also wanted you to know that I'm also part of a family who has a woman who faces a drug addiction who is also homeless by choice and she used to be a tenant for the property in the city of Binghamton. That property is now condemned because she destroyed it during her tenancy and that landlord is a local landlord. So personally, I've seen, lived and been exposed to all sides of this issue. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about myself. I will start by saying I applaud your conviction and desire to want to make Broom County a better place to live. I think honestly, that's what we're all here to do. The good cause eviction law that's being proposed was implemented in New York City, which you're aware of. This law was also recently introduced in Ithaca and Rochester, all of which, all three cities are vastly different than the city of Binghamton. I'm asking you to do something very simple today. I'm asking you to put a pin in this law until you have all of your data to work off of. As Nate advised me in an email over the weekend, that you do not have the data available to provide whether this law will be beneficial or not. As the most recent cities that have implemented this law have not even hit a year yet. Quote, "This is a challenge as the earliest passage of good cause on the local level outside of New York City would be last summer." "It's not really a meaningful timeframe to measure impacts." So my question to you as council members is if we cannot measure impacts, then can you please explain to me why we are rushing to put a law into place? It sounds to me that we are putting the cart before the horse. In the meantime, while we wait for this data, I would like to recommend the following. Please take the time to form a housing eviction committee, a committee that sits down with tenants and landlords to take into account the issues on both sides of the table. This committee can take a closer look at the current good cause eviction law, take out pieces of it which do have some good bones and encapsulate some ideas and concerns that the landlord is also facing. With creating a new and cohesive law that is not just one-sided, you will be able to better serve your constituents on both sides of the issues, the tenant's side and the landlord's side. Without doing this, you are single-handedly doing a disservice to your constituents that voted you into the seat, some of you very recently. You took an oath, an oath of office to serve and protect your constituents to the best of your ability and not fully taking advantage of both sides. You are doing a disservice. This good cause eviction law is not a political issue. It's a human rights issue. And when it comes to human rights, we need to make sure that all parties are involved, the tenants and the landlords. We all have a voice when it comes to writing a law and order. Our constituents of the city of Binghamton and Broom County deserve to have a safe and affordable housing. There is no arguing about that, but how do we do that? We have to listen to both sides. I want you to remember that there are many great landlords in our area, large and small. For every one to two bad landlords, there's also ten good ones to take their places. By simply approving a law meant for larger cities, you are going to be hurting those long-term generational property owners all because we have an ongoing issue with bad landlords. I want you to be the city council that realizes this, that yes, you recognize that they are, that there are issues, but these issues stem for both sides. So please take the time, form this committee, sit down and talk with local tenants and local landlords, find out the real deep-rooted issues and come up with a comprehensive law that will help everybody, not just some. Thank you for your time allowing me to address all of you. Please remember that I do appreciate your time, your efforts and your dedication to our city. I do see the passion in all of you and I appreciate that because I have the same passion. I would just appreciate if we could go about it in a more thought-up manner.
I think I would like to just represent in terms of this being considered pushed through or rushing without the data regarding impact. I can represent that the data we do have is that last year, one thousand two hundred and fifty-two individuals and seven hundred and fifteen families with children accessed emergency shelter across Broom County. That's a one hundred and eighty percent increase from just twenty-twenty in the number of families with children left with no other option but to seek shelter. So we've seen an incredible increase in homelessness and housing instability. And since twenty fifteen, in writing, analyses done by third parties, so twenty fifteen, we're at ten years now. Analyses performed by third parties in multiple written format that's publicly available has identified tenant protections when it comes to arbitrary displacement as a significant option. Locally, the managing attorney of legal services, who I don't believe is here this evening, but was part of conversations in considering impact, represented that good cause eviction legislation has the most potential for protecting tenants again, from arbitrary displacement. We've heard over and over how nuisance is an option that landlords want to maintain. It's represented as a singular situation within the court that makes it difficult for tenants to, or for landlords to displace tenants. I've observed over three hundred and fifty cases in Binghamton's landlord-tenant court since March of this year. I've heard landlords specifically when it comes to holdover evictions. I've heard landlord attorneys loudly refer to landlords as winners and tenants as losers. I've heard tenants seeking treatment for a substance use disorder referred to as scumbags and not worth the air they breathe, let alone the apartment I provide. This is all holdover cases. I've heard landlords report that the reason they did not renew a tenant's lease, which was them pursuing a holdover eviction, is because they quote, "didn't like how that person communicated." Worth noting here that this was while a landlord, that this was a white landlord referring to a tenant of Middle Eastern descent whose first language clearly wasn't English. In another case, an initial attempt at eviction was dismissed as retaliatory following a tenant making a code complaint, but the landlord stated they would be back as soon as the current. But the landlord stated they would be back as soon as the current lease was up to pursue a holdover eviction. Warrants of eviction. Are granted legally for arbitrary reasons under holdover every single week in Binghamton. So it's not that this hasn't been considered and that hours haven't spent, been spent observing what these cases look like in real life. What we're doing is trying to represent that we have a housing instability and forced displacement issue. And this law protects tenants from, from that. Being given 14 to 30 days to find alternative housing in a rental market where more than half of apartments are already reserved for students and the other 50% are either unaffordable or uninhabitable. Is traumatic. Speaking again to experience, I don't know if any of you have ever helped a six year old decide what of his and his younger sister's belongings need to be packed up in anticipation of moving to a shelter after a holdover eviction. Resulted in a warrant of eviction, but I have, and I can tell you that experience is tragic. Good cause eviction does not remove the right of landlords to reobtain possession. It simply limits them from doing so arbitrarily. It does not remove the right of landlords to increase rent. It simply prohibits them from doing so. In a largely unrelated market to exploit tenants by extracting maximum profit. That's a representation of my experience, my quote due diligence. I, I'm not saying that I speak on behalf of all council members, but in response.
Yeah, I mean. Can't really top that, but like the only, the only, the question I would have is like, where, where would I be able to find sufficient data? That would prove this to be accurate, because you, you've also stated that with, with Rochester is, is different than Ithaca, which is different than Albany and any other place that. Has passed this. If they were effectively able to, to isolate the impacts of this one law. I think. Over, let's say, the course of five years, whether it was positive or negative. People could, at the same time, say Rochester isn't Binghamton, so you can't really look at those results. So that's my, my frustration with the lack of action based on not having sufficient data to, to base this off of. And that's, I, I, I really like data and science and doing experiments. I have a background in engineering. And I'm as frustrated as anyone that we don't have an exact model to base this off of. And, but I think through different, how New York has seen different rent controls happen, whether it's New Jersey or Minnesota has been brought up. And they've adjusted this law to allow for flexibility where some of those side effects have happened. So that's, that's why I'm willing to continue to try to pursue this. Um, and I know that there's major housing stability issues and, and homelessness has been increasing over the last 10 years. I think that's just a side effect of our lack of affordable housing. And the ongoing gentrification or student, studentification of the, the area, so. That's just a little, little more insight besides that email I sent you. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Misty Kirby. I work, volunteer and live here in Binghamton. I've also lived in Duchess County. I've also lived in Manhattan. Taught in the South Bronx, lived in a lot of places. I've been a teacher for 26 years. And as a teacher in Binghamton City, it breaks my heart. It breaks my heart where I work in a school of almost 500 students and about 20% of our student population are homeless. This has only increased in the four years that I have lived in the city of Binghamton. I do own my home. I was unable to rent. But I did live in the Red Roof Inn in Johnson City for a few, awaiting to close. As a professor, moving into this city, finding rental properties was just not even an option. Not when I was competing with students. One of the things that I have. Living is that power will not give up their power easily. It is very clear to me that in this city and in this county, that white supremacy has reigned for far too long. And that people who believe that they have the right to be here over other people. Because I'm constantly told that I don't understand how things work here. I'm new. You don't get it. That's not how we've done things here. Well, I'm sorry, but the way you've done things here isn't working. It's not working for us. It's not. Us who struggle. It's not working. To be landlords, no matter how wonderful or. No matter how below the market rate, no matter how much we want to help our community, it's not working. The city clearly has not done enough for these kind landlords. Uh, I rented for about 27, 28 years, I've had one good landlord. But that was just on three continents, so surely you'll tell me that I don't know what I'm talking about because Binghamton is special. Binghamton is special. This is a lovely place, but it's not special in the way that a lot of people think that just because it happens here, it must not happen anywhere else. I also find that these people haven't left Binghamton much, so they don't have a clue. I'm also very disappointed at the lack of representation from our Binghamton City School District. I don't see any school board members here. I don't see, I haven't heard any letters written by the superintendent. In fact, the only city issue that I believe that she has weighed in on was not having the four wheelers going on in the city and having all the noise over in my neck of the woods over by Mary Street. It is unacceptable to have this many homeless children in this city. This is just a city of 50,000 people. This isn't Rochester, you're right. It's not Poughkeepsie, where I've also lived. It's not Beacon, where I've spent a lot of time. It's not New Paltz, where I've also spent a lot of time. But we need to do something. And I just hear a lot of fear mongering and a lot of people who are afraid that their livelihood is, is threatened. And I would say to them the thing that people tell me, well, if you feel that you shouldn't have opened up a store or whatever, my husband has been in restaurants for a long time. Then maybe you shouldn't have bought it. Maybe you shouldn't have bought the restaurant. Maybe you shouldn't have opened it. And if you're that close to the margins, why is that? Why are we going to disadvantage everyone else? Surely we have city grants and, you know, too bad that some of these good landlords didn't get some of that ARPA money.
You have about one minute left.
Thank you. I just really want to implore you all to pass this good cause, um, legislation to give our families and our city a chance.
Hello, I. Hello, I am David Kirby. I'm in eighth grade and I live here in Binghamton. I think that you should pass the good cause eviction law because it will help renters not be evicted without any reason or notice. Passing this will also help regular people who are just trying to survive. We have so many greedy landlords in Binghamton. Thankfully, this law will not help them. Thank you.
I do want to recognize, if you hold for just a moment, we have an individual up towards the top that is here and would like to speak.
Council member, thank you very much. My name is Deborah Hogan. Lifelong resident of Broom County. Extremely proud Center City resident. At age of 25, bought my multi-unit farm stand. When I am being told, and this comes from a background of working at the New York State Attorney General's Office for eight counties, including Broom. Where we were able to work with tenants to describe and we came out and did tenants' rights workshops. What is very disconcerting, and I heard from other landlords. If you look at what's on the current New York State Attorney General's Office website and read it as the tenants' rights and then flip it. That is a good way for landlords to understand their rights and responsibilities. I had very thoughtfully taken notes to give a presentation. Sadly, I left those at home this evening, but I'll do my best. One of the things that I'm going to try to represent both sides. Uh, Tarek Abdalazan, who is, uh, planning under Mayor Ryan. We were able, it spanned years, the Weed and Seed Grant was not a 4H project. It was a target within Center City. And I had the very distinct honor of being able to give landlord rights and responsibilities. And I underlined responsibility workshops as well as tenants' rights and responsibility. And both of those were filled and we actually did, um, like an extra set of that. What I'm hearing tonight is I'm thinking you're needing to listen to us more. And it's possibly because I've been in another format where I've heard the houseless numbers, the. What is affecting children and adults. When you are telling a landlord who is put in their time and energy. And just as a small landlord, I'm that under 10 dramatically. Trying to get someone to do small repairs is ridiculous. You can't find people and you're on a waiting list. I have a small roof repair that I've been trying to get help with since August. People come out and take a look at it, don't call you back. That's a, an issue on us small landlords. From the tenant perspective that you might not see is behind that rent, there is obviously the property and school taxes. There's also insurances if you're doing it right. You have under your roof, people's lives at stake that you need to provide safe housing to. So you need to have insurances. You need to be able to do the repairs. I have pest control, not that there is an issue, but so there's a monthly walkthrough. So if there are any issues that are not brought to my attention, but you have to have that communication. Right now, I'm not renting. I have vacant. Because I'm not sure what's happening here. I did go through, I think it was my first eviction I've owned since 93. Last fall. Unbelievable. And the damage to my property in trying to get somebody to fix. And what was done by that tenant, doing them a good deed to get them into housing. There was a lease. I will note in, from a business perspective, I did month to month, but there wasn't necessarily the security. You would have a term, you would be able to market three to four months out, have that conversation with the landlord, or excuse me, the tenant. Do you want to stay? If not, I need to start advertising. I need to start doing showings.
You have a little over 30 seconds left.
What I would like to see is if we could have education. So that there's more opportunity than on a January evening that everybody was rushing into a parking lot to come. I would like to have a couple more town halls, let's say at the senior center. And again, would like to echo Ms. Amicha's advice. Let's put a pin on it, get both sides and so that we have something that is amenable to all. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Hey, uh, yeah, my name is Dong. I'm a landlord and I work with hedge funds. And, um, we like this law. Uh, this law is going to eliminate competitions. And I may as well let you know that we're gonna pretty much gonna buy up all the little landlord people. I'm sorry, but you guys are making it easier for us. Uh, we have the money to pay, you know, lawyers, months and months, you know, toward the eviction and everything. So that's all I want to say, you know? I, I, my partner told me to come see this, see what's going on. And I'm like, our competition is going to get eliminated. Yeah, but we're going to make it better for you guys. Don't worry, it's going to be systemized, automated. Nobody's going to qualify, only the good people, the good tenants. And we love good tenants. That's all I gotta say.
Hi, I'm Marsha Gates. Y'all know who I am. Y'all were elected here because of your record on caring about the community, every last one of you. And, you know, none of us want to come in here. We got better things to do. I'm tired. I spent most of last night slash this morning protecting our houseless neighbors because of the projected sweeps. Those houseless neighbors exist because of evictions, because of displacement. I really appreciate Councilmember Rathmo highlighting the number of displaced families. Because last night. I, and not just me, there was a team of people. I'm not like, you know, out there doing things by myself. Assisted a family of now campers, unhoused folks. To move their belongings from the North Shore Riverbank to a safer location. And those belongings included pallets. Because the primary family member is working at a warehouse and he got those pallets from work to keep their things dry. When we talk about displacement. We have to think about those families who are struggling to just survive. Y'all have been out there. I, I know that you know what I'm talking about, that you have walked those riverbanks. And when I listen to landlords go after good cause, which is barely a, a drop in the bucket of what we need to help this community. It's outrageous. It is barely a protection. And they're going so hard against it. And you have to ask, why? Why are they so against something that really only has a problem with retaliatory evictions? They're still able to evict. They're still able to put people on the streets. It's outrageous. And to have this many landlords come here and not understand the human damage that is occurring to this community. It's flabbergasting. It's wrong and you all know it's wrong. Pass this law if that's why you're here.
If you had the recording, I'll just use my time to replay it. That was good. Um, I also appreciated the prior comment to the gentleman who said he works for the hedge fund managers. Cause I think that's something that's really important just to throw out in the open. It's like, nobody's really saying it is that there are two different paradigms here. One is approaching housing as a right. And another one is approaching housing as a commodity through which we extract as much profit as possible. Right? I mean, those two are irreconcilable. So if you're trying to figure out the perfect bill, there is none. Right? It's like, you do have to strike a balance as much as you can. But you have to put your foot down and do you believe in housing as a right for all? Or that it should just remain a commodity and hedge fund investors can come and extract as much profit as possible? Um, because I, I work, I was a former director of housing for the last 10 years. I've been working nationally in communities all over this country around housing, primarily in weak markets. Dealing with disinvestment and vacancy. And what's fascinating is that you can be in a community and trying to think through how you help disinvested neighborhoods. And it's an entirely different policy toolbox. And it's an entirely different policy toolbox than what you're considering right now. Because as soon as the market flips, your policy toolbox needs to change dramatically. And you're too late. There's just wreckage. There's tragedy. There's a bunch of folks that come with lawyers to try to intimidate you to protect the status quo that is incredibly lucrative. And there are some decent local landlords that are caught in the middle. Like, I admit that. That's the truth. So we are now at a position where you, people are saying, put the brakes on. Don't put the brakes on. It's like, this is, you know, I dealt with three flood disasters here in the city of Binghamton while I served nine years. The first response is emergency response. And we have an emergency. We have a crisis. Right? There's going to be some trouble, some waves afterwards. And we try to figure that out. But again, these two paradigms are irreconcilable. Just so people like think I'm crazy, like if you don't understand how lucrative, particularly the student rental market has become in Binghamton. You have no idea what's going on. And just on the West Side, Stonebridge, you know, an investment firm, maybe the gentleman works for him. In twenty nineteen, purchase or twenty twenty-one, excuse me, Stonebridge, twenty nineteen, spent twenty-three point six million dollars on student rental properties. Totally, they were only assessed for four point two eight million. So that's why the hedge funds love this. The incompetence, the public administration negligence, malpractice. I'm not maintaining assessments that are fair market values is literally incentivizing this carnage of our, our rental market. And throwing people out to the riverbanks and then criminalizing them. The second group, Amicus, another investment firm, twenty-three million. It's just, it's, it's, it's so lucrative. And then Scott Warren, who talked in, in the paper. Let me give you a perfect example, ninety-nine Oak Street. You know that property, right? You remember that guy Brock, K O. Management, you know, the one that had some arrest charges for guns, uh, yeah, um, with his tenants? Well, he purchased that with some other investors. And I got calls from a lot of those tenants that are saying they're upgrading the properties, they're moving me around, I have mobility issues. I'm a senior unlimited income. They're telling me they're gonna increase my rent three hundred dollars. One minute?
You have about one minute.
Yeah. Scott Warren has it listed for, what is this, three point zero five million dollars right now? The assessment is only two hundred and thirty thousand. Again, no wonder those hedge fund investors love that. They're not paying their fair share. They're displacing folks. They're extracting as much value as possible, not in this community, like some of our small responsible landlords, but out of our community. This is a crisis. Fix this. Then we move on to assessment citywide. Then proactive rental inspection and licensing and put funds in the budget to buy these properties. When some of these local responsible landlords want to actually do the right thing and then selling out to some more of these vultures. Thank you.
Hey y'all, uh, I came and talked about a bunch of stuff the first time this uh came around. So I'll just like ask a couple of questions. So before, before I ask questions, I just want to say like, seeing a attorney come up here and go way past their time. And just like walk all over city council and walk all over everyone who actually stays within their time. And has all of these lived experiences that they have to boil down into, you know, a couple of minutes. Uh, is really, really disappointing. And that's the kind of people that you are elected to protect us from, our predator, our predatory attorneys. Okay, um, but anyways, I just want to start off, uh, Councilmember Kavanaugh made a point earlier that um, that uh, you know, there are some issues with the court and with judges and that these are things that need to be discussed. But I just wanna, and, and what I've heard again and again from landlords and they've kind of talked around it, but they've kind of said this. Is that they use holdover evictions kind of willy nilly. And their excuse is it's because, oh, these other forms of evictions, oh, the courts, oh, the judges, oh, I bring all this evidence, but it doesn't. But I just, I just want to like, like point that out, that they're saying, hey, we use holdover evictions to force people out. Because we just kind of vibes based feel that the, you know, legal system that is in place has failed us as landlords. So we're getting rid of that excuse when we, when we hear them talk about that. The other, the other thing is, is that, you know, they might be losing an investment, maybe a significant investment, maybe a real financial burden. But they're, they're not necessarily losing their housing immediately, right? These are not equal things. This is not an equal contract between two people who have equal things at stake. And, and I'm assuming at least most of you, probably all of you have been tenants at some time in your life. So I'm sure all of you can understand that these are not equi- equal um, uh, sides. But um, okay, so the, my first question is, y'all have talked to a lot of landlords, including a lot of Realtors Associations. Y'all have also talked to a lot of landlords outside of our community. How, what are you doing to, you know, make sure that you're sticking to supporting your constituents within the community, including landlords within the community? And making sure to filter out the voices of those who may have investments in the community, but are not your constituents, who have not voted for you?
That was, that was a long question.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't know specifically how many landlords that are not local that I've heard from at all. And I, I think that's, I think it's to the advantage of local landlords that they know like what's happening in local government. And I have no idea if there are absentee landlords that are aware of even this proposal. And I think that that like highlights some of the problems that we do have with absentee landlords is that they're really out of touch with this community overall. So I, I haven't heard that I know of from landlords that aren't locally based.
All right, yeah. Uh, my landlord lives out of state, so that's what made me think I should probably ask. Um. Uh. So you did a lot of time doing court watch. I just, I, we heard a whole bunch from Rebecca of stories of, of landlords. Um, kind of abusing their power in different sorts of ways. Last time I was here, actually, I was here with someone else whose landlord was also here. And after he spoke, uh, the, the landlord turned back to the audience, to the other landlords he was sitting near and goes, that's my tenant. He goes, that's my tenant. So I just, I just want to point out that there's like, you know, retaliation and power that's going on behind the scenes. It's really gross. Y'all don't necessarily get to hear it because they don't have a mic when they're saying these really rude things. But I've heard even just today, some real rude things from the gallery. Oh my God, I had a question. I just kept talking. Okay. Uh, in your experience and anyone's experience, how are these holdover uh evictions currently being used and how will this fix that? That's a big question as well. Sorry.
It, so what, back when I was doing court watch, it was more, it was during like eviction moratorium stuff. So that was a few years ago and I don't, I tried to, I don't know. I, I don't have a good answer for how those holdovers, because everything was, seemed like everything was nonpayment. So I don't have like specific memories about, or, or the, I'd have to go through a lot of notes and those are about three years old at this point.
I hadn't, I mean, I think when you started and represented that it's being used willy nilly. Because it's an option when other movements to evict aren't successful. That's been a large part of my observation. So I know I said it earlier, but I have observed landlords who are using holdover. For example, an individual who was not successful in bringing a warrant of eviction under another reason. Who very clearly in courts that I'll be back at the end of their lease to get them out. Because I don't like how they communicate. Um, so it's, it's a niche within the legal system as it stands. That is used under the premise of holdover for a host of reasons. You said based on vibes and I don't think that's incredibly inaccurate.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then one more question. Um, and this might be another one that it's kind of not clear, but I'm curious because this is an issue I've heard a lot about. I'm, obviously I live here, I'm also a student, but um, we heard earlier from the attorney that uh, this will actually cause an issue with landlords who are renting to students. Because they want to force the students out every year. Is the kind of flip side to that, that this incentivizes? Cause like, that's kind of a little bit of a Freudian slip. Does that mean that this is a little bit incentivizing um, renting to families rather than to students?
When I was uh, trying to work through like the implications that this might have on student um, housing, I, I came to that conclusion that it might be. Rather than doing like the cycles of, of students and the potential for them to renew their lease, that it might be better to just run to local people. If that's the new, this becomes the new um, norm.
And I've, I've heard that as a concern from like basically everyone I've ever talked to in the community, that, that students being a contributing factor to the housing crisis is a really, really important issue. Also, just one other thing, then this doesn't even really touch on it, but it is a really big problem is that landlords who aren't, am I, one minute?
You have about twenty seconds left.
Okay, um, in twenty seconds, landlords who aren't zoned to rent to students, rent to students anyways. Students aren't checking the Broome County G I S to see what zone for what. So that's a really big issue as well. Uh, don't know that anyone here is doing that necessarily. I don't think, probably not if they're good landlords, but that is a really big issue in the community as well.
We've got one, we got one zoning enforcement officer and it's all complaint driven. So if there's no complaints, then nobody knows about those situations.
Um, good evening, everybody. I'm Joe Gale, the local Board of Realtors President twenty twenty-five, along with my association executive, Alison Donnelly. What, our position on the good cause eviction, I've been studying it for six years from Albany to here. Um, and we oppose it as the Realtor Group with some very good reasoning. Um, we'll give you the five talking points. We'll keep a short, sweet and simple because I think everyone's getting tired. Um, can you hear me now? So the one thing that we are asking is definitely put a pin on this for right now. The other cities that were mentioned here tonight spent three years studying this as in-depth. We just don't want the city to make a decision in three weeks. I mean, this was kind of pushed through pretty quick from when we first heard that it was gonna be on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. Um, so the reason why we oppose this, and this is across the board, the New York State Association of Realtors and the local association. There is no data or evidence of a eviction crisis in the city of Binghamton. We realize that there's issues with evictions, but there, it's not at a crisis point like in other areas in New York. A good cause eviction law will make it harder to invest in and maintain rental housing pr- uh, built prior to two thousand and nine. Imposing a good cause eviction in Bing- Binghamton would drive smaller community-based property owners away from the city. And um, push out the and pave a way for out of town investors to purchase the property who are as bonded to the community as the local landlords are.
Hello, again, my name is Alison Donnelly and I'm the Executive Officer of the Greater Binghamton Association of Realtors. I definitely want to, you know, thank the council for looking into this matter and really taking the time to ask the questions of, of everyone. Um, I, I do understand that we have a housing crisis in our area. We as Realtors, we see the numbers, we see the available housing for everyone, renters, buyers. It, it's absolutely a nationwide crisis, housing is. And because of the, the, the association's charter, we definitely look to protect private property rights. And I, I understand that sometimes that's not a popular consideration when we are weighing it against human rights. We definitely have a human rights crisis when it comes to housing in the area for all individuals, right? We're, we're not going to make that better though by taking rights away from one group and giving it to another. And, and I, I think we need to stop the vitriol between landlords and tenants. Um, thus far this evening, most of the vitriol, I, I feel like landlords have been vilified simply because they are landlords. And I have several Realtors, wonderful people. They're, they're living very, you know, very simple existences. They're not raking in the money as a landlord. They're trying to make an honest living as a landlord and that makes up a very large percentage of my Realtors. They actually do purchase a property um, here and there and, and provide that service. And our concern is, is that imposing this eviction, as we said, would pave the way for a lot of the out of town issues. And you know, as the gentleman said, the hedge funds are going to love this. Um, I think we need to take the breaks and see what did those other cities do? You know, we do know that Albany passed it, uh, passed good cause eviction in June. We have Kingston, uh, shortly after, Ithaca, Faux Kipsey, Beacon City, um, Newburgh, Nyack, Hudson and New Paltz. Do you have about a minute left? Can we see what their data results in? Can we watch with a watchful eye? What's that?
Sorry, you have about a minute left.
Okay, can we look with a watchful eye and, and analyze their data when they have it? Cause I don't, I don't discount the fact that we do have individuals that are accessing the homeless shelters and that we are having that crisis occur. But I don't know that this is going to solve that in the way that we think it's going to solve it. Um, I want to get back to the fourth point here. We don't believe that good cause eviction will uh, lead to the construction of more affordable housing. I think we need to make the construction of affordable housing obviously a priority. And this may not yield that. The community may not be targeted as a, a, a community where affordable housing will be promoted. Um, we also look at the municipal good cause eviction laws in New York State that were first adopted this year. Um, adopting this law in Binghamton without a multi-year evaluation of its impact on these other municipalities I stated, it would be imprudent. We don't know the impact. And simply for that reason, um, I, I referenced Erin Meech's com- comments. I think she made a great statement on, I think it needs a little more time.
Five minutes is up.
I know, I know there wasn't a question in there, but I want to respond to it quickly. Um, because I, again, I've heard like the speculation be kind of all over the board. Um, and there is also in the news, I think this was represented that it would um, everyone would sell out to large like conglomerates and that's been the narrative, but it's also been represented that there would be divestment from large New York City-based investment firms. So I think in my mind, everyone is looking at this and trying, and drawing conclusions, but it's, none of it is really evidence-based. And I think it would be positive for our local community if there was divestment from the, the larger firms. So there's, I just wanted to add that quickly.
And I think I had, in response to that specifically, so um, representing that the other cities that have passed this spent three years considering it. And so in discussions with those other cities and conversations regarding the reasoning they had. No, we don't have the impact on either side, but we have open lines of communication where they're representing their reasoning. So for us to take three, I'm confused by the proposal that we wait. When others who have passed it have shared their reasoning, we're in conversation. Um, I mean, basing opposition on projected impact. But then urging us not to make a decision to support based on projected yet unknown impact is inconsistent.
Good. Hi, so my name's Cody Reed. Um, under this law, I would be considered a large investor. I do not see myself. I am under ten units with that. My first thing is I just uh, kind of reiterate a question that I had asked at the Bampton Realtors meeting, a couple of you were there. One of the good cause evictions is if it's taken off the market in this pamphlet, it says that taking it off the market is in good faith. You know, if the landlord in good faith is going to take it off the market, is there any more in-depth to that? Or how do you prove good faith in the court of law? Do we know any more than that?
I, I don't have a good answer and I, I've been thinking about that since you asked before, but the I think uh, why it has the good faith in there is that there's like potential for abuse. If it's just like, I'm taking it off the market, so you have to leave. And then there isn't a earnest opinion to do.
Correct, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand is if there would be a timeline, you know, hey, it's got to be off the market for 60 days or you have to present a, you know, a law of improve, you know, you're going to improve this property in some way or form under this duration where it's off the market. But there's no answer understood.
I would actually say, so I would refer you to real property law. So chapter 50, Article 6A does section out the grounds for removal and what is still considered allowable cause. And so there are details in that, I didn't pull them into my notes to represent, but there are details on essentially what good faith means in the burden of proof.
Thank you. I guess I'll just get to my point. I really think at the end of the day, this does do a lot of good. This will have a minimum effect on me, in my opinion. I always had great tenants. I've only ever had to do one eviction. It was a rollover eviction where I had to, was allowed to terminate the lease due to nuisance. It was easier and cheaper. But I don't think that this rule addresses the real, or this law addresses the real problem of Binghamton. You talk about affordable housing. The fair market housing for a three-bedroom apartment is $1,500. We've heard from every, well, most Realtors that were here today and the Realtors that were at the Realtor Association meeting, discussed that right now, either they are under that fair market value, they have not raised the rent, right? We're the, we'll say the good landlords. If you're here speaking on behalf of this, you're probably not someone who's doing things the wrong way. I guess I'll generalize it that way. But with that, now, I think Nate, you had referenced that we go, if we drop this as small market landlords, right? From 10 to one, it increases from 20% to 80% of the rental market. So it's fair to say that the majority of the Realtors in, in Binghamton are the small market Realtors. We've heard from a couple of them tonight and we heard from more of them at the Realtor meeting, where the fear for us is the fear that we're going to lose something that we love and we put work into and for our livelihood of that one bad time, that one bad case, where our property now becomes condemned because we weren't able to stop that lease due to negligence by the tenant or due to a nuisance. The house becomes, you know, basically unrepairable or we become not able to afford the cost of that repair because of what the increased duration of the timeline will be, right? To evict someone because of this, because we'll have to go to court, we'll have to prove all the laws as opposed to just being able to not renew the lease. And I don't think necessarily that that's a reason to not go forth with this law. But I just want to make sure everyone kind of understands the unintended consequences that's going to, that's going to do. Cause for someone like me, I'm going to increase the barriers of entry into my property now. The security deposit will be increased, the credit check and background check process will be increased. And we also heard at the Realtors meeting how there were several landlords who had multiple dozens of vacant units because of their fear, because of their fear to rent to someone that would cause them this issue. So we're going to be much stricter because we cannot afford it because we don't make enough. We're not these large, big out-of-market investors to cover that. And I just want to make sure that that's kind of the worry, you know, that, that we're looking at and that's what our fear is. Things to solve that, right? We need new housing, we need new affordable housing, we need new zoning so that all the students aren't taking up the majority of the rental area or more zoning officers to help, you know, correct this issue. But that's, that's my piece. Understood, but this is, this is judged by, but that's judged by the state, the fair market value is assessed by the state, so. That would be, that would be my argument to that would be that I've never had a house on the market for more than two days.
We do.
Right. Yeah, it's extreme, it's extremely challenging because.
We do have more folks hoping to speak.
And someone still probably rented it.
We do have, we do have more folks hoping to speak.
The volume's not here. The volumes, that's a different issue.
Thank you. If y'all want to continue your, I mean, that, that conversation feels, no, I don't mean right now. Feel free to, appreciate that, thank you.
Hello, Darlene Donald, I am an attorney and I specialize in landlord-tenant law. I work with.
Speak into the microphone.
Hello, is this good or too loud?
No, that's fine.
Okay, my name is Darlene Donald. I'm an attorney who specializes in landlord-tenant law. I represent a lot of property owners. I have also represented tenants. I also own property, my father owned property all while I was growing up, had over 40 buildings with multiple units in the city of Binghamton. I'm here today because I want to make sure this actually is the best possible option going forward and it's going to actually do what we think it's going to do, what you think it's going to do. Because I feel opposite, I do not see how it's going to be beneficial. There's pros and cons to every situation. I would like each of you to give me a con in this situation. I've heard how it's going to supposedly help the market, help keep people off the street. Well, there's two sides, I would like each of you to tell me a con.
I, I'll start. So I had the, the pleasure of going to a houseless rally, I'd say about almost a month ago. And there were a bunch of people just who, who were out there who, at this rally, they had food, blankets, just things to keep people warm when it was really cold. And this lady came up to me and she was bawling her eyes out. And of course I started to cry with her and you know, she was like, thank you so much. And I said, well, I'm not hosting this, I'm just here just to see what's going on. And she said that she had lived in a house, in an apartment, and the landlord had like got someone to like hit the pipes or something. So that way the house was condemned, so she had no place to go. She had like a certain time in order for her to move. And she couldn't like, she stayed on a few families' couch, you know, couches for a certain time. But you know, after a certain time, they're like, you have to get out, so.
And I can, I see that as a pro for the good cause.
Yes, and that's.
I'm looking for, what are the cons of adopting this law? Like what are the, the issues?
I think.
I think rent might go up.
Yeah.
The pain one, right? I think we'll probably see that it will be standard that every lease, every year, the rent will be going up by something like 8%. And.
It already is.
Right now, the other thing we're seeing is that people, when the buildings are selling in my district, I had, you know, people's rents are tripling, so.
It is, yeah.
But the, I mean, the con is rent, well, for, from a tenant perspective, the rent, rent going up every year would be a con.
I guess here's something that I'm not, I don't know.
But.
Have you guys talked to actual attorneys who work in landlord-tenant law?
Yes.
Okay, and I, ma'am, please, I did not, I was not disrespectful to anybody, everybody has their right, I just want to use my time, okay? Thank you. So holdover cases are actually beneficial. I don't know if you realize this, but it's a 30, 60, 90-day notice. If it's a breach of lease, it's 10 days. 10 days they're given. If it is a nuisance, it's 10 days. These people under these situations, illegal acts, they get 10 days notice to leave. Where you got 30, 60, 90 as a holdover, they actually have time to find housing.
Can't find it in that time either.
Situation by, you know, in adopting this law, tenants are actually going to have a lot less time to find actual housing. Right now, so many of the property owners, and I've spoken to over a hundred people. I've researched this, I've talked to Ithaca Syracuse council members, I've talked to attorneys. I have, I want to know what the best thing to do is. If the council could please just instruct the audience to let me just speak without any commentary, I, I would appreciate that.
You can continue, you have the mic.
Thank you. The majority of landlords that I represent and that I've know that I've spoken to, every single one of them has said they are going to take the people who they rent to into consideration on a much deeper level. Okay, they are going to have leases and rental agreements. Most landlords do not have leases and rental agreements. It's literally the only ways to get them out are non-payment of rent, holdover, potentially nuisance, which I'll get into in a second. Okay, that's giving tenants a ton of time to find housing. They take faith, they have faith and they try to help tenants who don't have good credit, who don't have references. Well, by enacting the good cause law, they're going to require good credit. They're going to require references. So the people who this law is supposed to help, they're not going to even get into housing in the first place. I don't think the numbers are going to get to where you want because people aren't going to be able to even get into housing in the first place. Nuisance cases, they are so difficult to prove. You have to have other tenants testifying. By passing this law, you are now putting every single tenant in the situation where they will have to testify against potentially dangerous people, tenants who harass them constantly for months. I don't know how many people here would actually go to court, testify against somebody knowing that that person will be able to continue to harass them for months on end. We won't be able to prove the nuisance cases. It's got to be eyewitnesses, it's got to be people that are affected. As far as substantial damage to properties, you have no idea the number of tenants that do not let landlords into the properties to inspect. The longer they're living there, the worse the damage gets. Landlords go in and the properties are completely destroyed. I had that situation when I couldn't evict during COVID. I was out $60,000 in renovations because over a period of three years, they, or two years, they destroyed the house.
You have a little under one minute left.
The other things I just want to make sure I point out are if an assessment has not been done on how this is going to affect Broom County property rates, it needs to. The assessor in Tompkins County came out and testified that he believed the housing prices in the city would be negatively impacted by Ithaca adopting the law. Seeing how the property owners pay a bulk of the city's taxes, I think this is something that must be done. If it has not been done already, the assessor's office needs to be contacted and it needs to be done. Decreased property values mean less properties being taken care of and less taxes coming into the city. And then the last thing I wanted to address just real quick is the definition of the landlord, the small landlord. I, that is something in this law that you have said that can be changed. It can be one, it could be two, it could be three. I think that research really does need to be done to see the harm and effect that would be done on somebody who owns only one property. Because you're looking at somebody here who, I have one property, that's it. It's put me in debt. And if I can't get rid of people who are destroying my property because I can't even get in to look at it, I mean, I had to take out loans, private loans.
Five minutes.
The emotional impact, the mental impact on single landlords when they're hurt by a tenant or stuck with a bad tenant, it's really harmful to them and it's not right to them. So I do ask that you specifically take a look at and put a lot of thought into the number if this law does pass. But again, I do oppose the law. Representing a lot of other attorneys in this area today and property owners who are also in opposition. Thank you.
I think I would just note, since you brought it up several times, that one of the conditions for good cause for removal of a tenant is if they are unreasonably refusing the landlord access to the housing accommodation. So this would not impact that, right?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, you just, I'm sorry, because you just made a comment on what I had said. Who's going to decide that? Because in order to file a case with the court, you have to prove there actually is damage. You can't go to the court and say, hey, I think there is.
The burden of proof will continue to be on the attorney, your time is up.
I know ma'am, but you did make a comment and I did feel like I should be able to address that.
First of all, I'm Mark Whalen. Thank you for putting this on, it's, I was a legislator for 32 years and a lot of times the legislature does not take public comment. So thank you for reaching out to get a perspective from across. Thank you for reaching out to get a, a perspective from a, across the spectrum. So not only was I a legislator, I was a assistant chief with the fire department, served for 38 years here. I'm also a small-time provider of residential rental services. And many of you think, oh, he's a landlord, he's a slumlord. No, not at all. I ended up buying properties in the neighborhood that I grew up in because my mother and sister still live there. Bought them from people who passed away, from their families. They weren't interested in, in renting them out. Said if you want to sell them, I'd be more than interested in, in making you a fair offer. So I have four, two families, okay? I have never thought of myself as a large landlord. I don't generally rent to students, I have, it hasn't worked out very well. But I also don't get top dollar either. I, I have a number of, I have a one-bedroom, most of them are two-bedrooms and one-three-bedroom. And the rents range anywhere from six and a quarter to 850 a month. Certainly not abusive. But what I'm trying to get across is that, that yeah, I'm just a, a small landlord. I do a lot more than just sit back and, and collect the rent. I put roofs on, paint constantly. I've never had to hire a painter because I always do it myself. But then again, I don't have to get top dollar because I do the work myself. It also establishes a good rapport with the tenants. I've had tremendous luck with my tenants. I think tenants are, are like a treasure to me. Because if you have a good tenant, you want to keep them there, they're not wrecking the place. I have had one instance where, where a person, I didn't rent to him. He, he ended up marrying a, a girl from the neighborhood that I rented to. He was a violent alcoholic and he destroyed the house. It sat vacant for four years while I renovated it. Kicked like 32 holes in the wall, smashed doors, sinks, toilets, anything, anything that, that stood in his frame of mind when he got angry, he would destroy. So yeah, there are some horror stories out there. I'm sure there's some horror stories with, with tenants who are pushed out of, of, of housing or rents raised on them. I guess what I'm getting at is, is these broad policy measures that you're implementing or looking at implementing. Is it, will that be sufficient to solve the problem that you want to address? And more importantly, are there other ways to address the problem? Such as, let's see, I'm bouncing around here. You know, talk of, of, of of high instability, housing instability, okay? I, I would say part of that is the constant turnover of the students over on the west side. Every year they sign a new lease, move on to a bigger apartment, change, change roommates, housemates. Also, one of the causes for high instability is, is, is the conversion of apartments to Airbnbs down in New York City. Now they finally started to take.
You have one minute left.
One minute. And they've finally started to take some action on that and, and that's good. And here in Binghamton, it's, they have a good policy. The policy is you can't open up an Airbnb, you can't rent it out unless you live on the premises. And that is a wonderful thing because it keeps a lot of houses available for families. So basically, I, I think if you really want to do something for families, you need to look at, at more code enforcement officers. It's, it's tough to get them to do something. I know how busy they are, even though they're just a demand-driven organization. It needs to be more than that, they need to do sweeps like they've done in the past. You need to also look at reassessment. The, the stories that we've heard about these out-of-community people coming in and, and hedge funds, I get at least one call a week or text a week from, from some landlord with a 914 or 212 offering to buy up all my properties. with a 914 or 212, offering to buy up all my properties, cash. They, they, they just, I said, listen, stop calling me. I'm gonna, when I sell it, I'll sell to a family.
Your five minutes is up.
One, one, one last thing. And the third thing would be, do your best to build some more affordable housing. I think that's really the key answer to this, this issue. It's more affordable housing. Don't pit one group against another. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Mark. I, I do want to make sure, I want to make sure it doesn't get lost, that we are not seeing good cause eviction as the single solution to homelessness and housing instability in the city of Binghamton. We are seeing it as a single tool that will be effective in preventing displacement geared toward reducing the number of individuals who are having to access homeless services. So prevention within this legislation is the key goal and the key strategy. We absolutely are and should continue to be considering legislation and proposing legislation that transforms our archaic, traditional and reactive code enforcement system into a proactive code enforcement system that restructures the department and supports more funding to it, to scale it to need. We absolutely need to be implementing legislation that incentivizes affordable housing. Like, so I, I just, all that, I want to say all that to say, we don't see this as a singular solution. We see this as a step toward addressing the broader issue that I don't think anyone's challenging tonight. But, but thank you for that.
Good evening. My name is Willa Payne. I'm the managing attorney at Legal Services of Central New York. I have been representing tenants for 12 years in landlord tenant court. I'm here tonight to support the good cause legislation and I commend all of you for bringing it forward. In this city, there is no question that there is a housing crisis. It's not only a stability crisis, but it is a quality crisis. The housing that we see on a regular basis is rife with code enforcement violations and quality of life issues. The tenants that we represent, majority of which are just trying to make ends meet, are just trying to meet their daily needs and are trying to support their children in, you know, quality housing. Good cause will address one major issue that we see on a regular basis. In fact, I had an intake in my office this morning with this issue, the retaliatory evictions. That is why when we hear landlords talking about utilizing holdover evictions sort of in, as a last resort, as sort of just the, the, the go-to, instead of in the actual reasons why they want to evict the tenant, we see good cause as a way to prevent retaliatory evictions. We see good cause as a way to prevent discriminatory evictions, where the 30, 60, 90 day is really just a pretext for, I don't like the color of your skin, or I don't like the way that you speak. That's what we see on a regular basis. I've been doing this for 12 years. I have day-to-day experience in justice and city court, and we see a lot of 30, 60, 90-day holdover evictions for those reasons. And in this city, we should not allow that, right? We don't want that. We don't want our citizens being discriminated against. We don't want our citizens afraid to contact code enforcement to report quality of life issues because they know the next thing that's coming is a 30, 60, or 90-day eviction notice. This law is very narrowly tailored to address the bad actors, not the good landlords. And we've heard from a lot of them tonight, right? This is not going to affect the majority of landlords in this city. The people that it will affect are the people who are doing the wrong thing, the people who are hurting the community and who are leading to more instability. Our office wrote a letter of support. It should be in the record in favor of this legislation. And, you know, it's your elderly neighbor who is on a fixed income, who can't afford another rent hike. It's your mom of four who doesn't have heat right now and is afraid to contact codes for their heating apartment with their oven, plugging in multiple space heaters. Those are the people that this law will actually protect. It's not the, it's not the tenants who are causing damage to the homes, right? Because there's all of these carve-outs and exceptions in this legislation to address exactly those situations. And the landlords remain able, and we want the landlords to remain able, to evict tenants who are causing damage, who are a nuisance, which right now it's actually called an objectionable tenancy. There isn't a nuisance action in upstate New York that only exists in New York City. But there is a huge body of case law from rent-stabilized properties in New York City and some of the other surrounding counties that can give you a great idea of what an actual nuisance cause of action would be for anybody who's concerned with what that means. But right now in upstate New York, it's really the way that you evict a tenant is through an objectionable tenancy when you have a problem with a tenant. It's not actually a nuisance. So this actually creates a new avenue that didn't exist before. You know, it's very similar. Obviously, the terms are different, but it's just this idea that this is going to severely limit a landlord's ability to get rid of problem tenants is just not accurate. It's misinformation. Yes, you still have to go to court and you will have to prove your case, just like you have to now.
You have a little over 30 seconds.
So I commend the city council for taking this up. And I certainly hope that it passes on behalf of all of the families, the children, and, you know, the, the tenants that we see displaced and forcibly removed, which is violence, right? Forcible removable is violence against our families and children in this community. We have to stop to stem that as much as we possibly can. And this won't make a huge dent in that, but it will change some of those circumstances that I talked about that, you know, just are wrongful situations. Thank you. I don't want to go over my time.
Hello. I absolutely hate the power dynamic that it is to come down and speak to this mic, but it's also horrible to just sit in the back of that room and like, listen to what's happening down here. So bear with me. I, I thought this was meant to be kind of a conversation or a back-and-forth, but I don't really have a ton of questions about good cause because I'm obviously for it. But I did have a few questions based on what's been circulated in conversation with this mic tonight. So just if anyone wants to bear with me with this. So to be a landlord, that's a business decision, right? It's like an opt-in into investment, a position of privilege. That's, that's something that I view that as. And then another question would be, in the 21st century, do we think it's an option to have housing? Like, do we think it's something that we should view as an optional aspect of life and living? Like, I don't think it is. I think we all agree that people deserve to have homes. So yeah, to be a landlord is to opt into a position of privilege, one who lords over, hello? One who lords over X number of tenants. Everything about this, even this room, is a huge power dynamic. And I'm, it makes me uncomfortable just being in this seat, and I've said that. Publicly speaking on this is teeing me up, right, for possible retaliation? And that sucks. I wanted to kind of reiterate some points that others asked already, but again, as our elected officials, who do you represent? A landlord is one, right? How many tenants do they house in their buildings? That in mind. And then I wanted to bring up too, as a legislating body, you don't, you don't have control over the judicial branch, right? That's called something. What's that called? Anyone? Checks and balance? Yeah. I think that's, I think that's fifth grade. Where did our lawyer go? Oh, sorry. Excuse me. She left already? Oh, oh my, she's here. We'll talk later. Okay. Yeah. And then just to end, I'd like to act for some urgency with this vote and kind of echo Tarek and others and treat this as a crisis situation. We might just, some of us be woken up to this as a concept right now because we have homes that we go home to. We're not tenants, we're not renters. But this is a real problem for a lot of us that we've been facing. So act with urgency and move now and adapt as you need. I don't know, it's been years in the making and we, we know this. So, thank you.
Good evening. Is this working? So my name is Sana. I've lived in Binghamton almost my whole life. I work with a lot of families that are in hotels, that are homeless, houseless, all types of things. So I deal with a lot of people firsthand. I've had my own experiences as well. And I know a lot of people here said that housing is a crisis and that they know it. But my question is, have I experienced it? Like, do you know what it feels like to be poor? Have you fought with a landlord? Okay, because I, I would, I would love to hear you speak from experience of that, from that perspective of that.
I would love that. I would love that. We can meet after.
Yeah, we can meet after, but I would love to hear like, the actual experience of poverty. Because I'm here for the kids and the families that don't have the bus fear or doesn't have a way to get a free bus pass to even come here to even know about this. So that's who I'm here for. So my other question is actually pertaining, is related to the landlords here and everyone who's in opposition of this. I mean, like, because this is a law that I feel barely removes any privileges from landlords and actually barely protects the tenants. Honestly, my question is, for the landlords in the room, if we know without a doubt that there are multiple landlords that are evicted families for ridiculous arbitrary reasons, would anyone here be willing to let go of some privilege for the betterment of someone more vulnerable? That's a human, that's a, that's a humanity question. Oh, okay. Because you're in opposition, so your actions are saying something else. Okay. Because I, you know, I give up my privilege. I have privilege as well. I give up my privilege in my time when I'm helping families. I don't have enough money to, to buy a coat for their kids. And I'm raising money to get coats for children. I'm, I'm sacrificing my time when I'm trying to find ways to get hot meals to families in the hotels that have been evicted for ridiculous reasons because the hotels don't have ovens or stoves for people to cook a hot meal and sit down with their children on Christmas. That's, that, those are the experiences that I'm in, here for. I'm not here for the privilege to be able to buy a, a hot water pump for another home that I'm not living in. I don't come from that privilege. I'm here for the privilege for the people that don't have the privilege to be here. So that's what I'm speaking for. And I honestly feel like I shouldn't have to be here because you guys were voted into office for this. Like, I shouldn't have to come here to talk about this stuff that you're already supposed to do. I mean, so I just feel like, to even hear them complain, I mean, this is the world we live in, a give or take world. And unfortunately, a lot of people want to take more than they want to give because, I mean, what does this, this law really do? One extra step? So what is it, buying us a little more time for someone to try to find a place to live? You know, but I mean, I, I'm okay with sacrificing my privilege because I find my humanity in that, so.
My name is Jasmine Stratford, S-T-R-A-D-F-O-R-D. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I was just like, really taken back by the amount of landlords present today fighting against this cause. Literally every protection in places for you guys. You guys get all of the, the say. You guys are the ones who say, well, I don't like them, let's put them out. Oh, this person, well, I never had a problem with this, this tenant, so this tenant gotta be the problem. That's impossible. That's not right. People are getting put on the streets daily, myself included, as a recent houseless person. I dealt with it. I lost everything in the process of this. I lost everything, my clothes, my home, my children's stuff. We had nothing. And then there was no solution for us to go to. We couldn't go to DSS and ensure that we were gonna be solid in place. No, we had to fight for that. So think about everybody else who have to fight for this. Why are we fighting against this? Why are we putting it on hold? What is the pen for? There's nothing else happening here. There's no solutions. This is not a solution. It's a stepping stone, as you said before. It's a stepping stone. So why can't we take a stepping stone to change? Because y'all pockets are gonna be harmed? What they do? It's a dime to humanity. Don't sacrifice your humanity for money. Pass the calls.
Good evening. My name is John Ellen Cooper. I'm a real estate, licensed real estate agent for Keller Williams in, in Binghamton. I am also a member of NASCAR and the Commercial Real Estate Association. And I am here tonight just to listen. However, I'm hearing both sides of the story. I am also a, a member of BLI, Room Leadership Institute, that going through the process of looking into all of the, the, the housing crisis and the, the, the food crisis, things that are happening here in Binghamton. And I, when, when Binghamton University started, everybody wanted bigger and better Binghamton University. We got a lot to prove. We got a lot to do. And, and then we had the, the, the school of, for the dentistry school. And nobody thought, what's gonna happen with the housing crisis? So obviously renters came in. You have a lot of student housing because we wanted to increase the student, the student count by 20,000 by the year, I think it was 2020. And, but there was no place to really put them. So we had investors come into town, make student housing for everybody. There were private investors that came in to, to rent out for student housing. And of course, that, that creates a decrease in housing for families. Now, we are bound by the Fair Housing Authority that we, we cannot discriminate against housing. I don't know if that's true above and aboard for every landlord that we have, but I have to say, all my experiences with landlords as a licensed real estate agent have been above and, and they've been, they've been for the tenants as well, as for themselves. I know that in BLI, there is one of the biggest things that we, we need to attract are people that want to stay here, the young generation that want to stay in Binghamton. But in order to do that, we want them to create businesses. Well, one of the really best businesses there is, is to own real estate. And, you know, not just to have a home, but use it for investment purposes to be a landlord. And I, I hear, I hear all these negative things about landlords, but I think they're pretty awesome, actually. They do provide a service for people that don't have housing. And, and, you know, I, I understand the fact that there are some landlords that are really good and there's some landlords that have housing that is inadequate. Well, I think because it costs so much to, to upkeep a lot of these properties that we have and to bring them up to above-standardized living conditions because it's very expensive. And you can put the money into a home, but it doesn't mean that your house will appraise for what it, what you're putting into your home. So there's another, there's another aspect to that as to, you want, you want to invest in real estate and you want to provide good housing for, for people. And yet you can't really afford to because you're gonna pay more than your house is actually worth. And if you want somebody to establish a business here in Binghamton, you can't really justify that as a business option. It doesn't make sense for a business person. And what, what do landlords want to do? They want to make money. They're not here, you know, they're not here always just to provide housing. It's, they, they want to make a living. And it's really hard for them to make a living when it costs so much to improve some of these homes that we have out there. So maybe that's another thing that you can look into as to how can we help landlords, thank you, help landlords get a better option to improve these homes? Thank you. Help landlords get a better option to improve these homes so that the assessment or the appraised value would be the same as what they put into the house. Thank you.
I think since, since you mentioned business in particular, I am not aware of any other industry within our economy that does not have the presumption of risk when an individual is opting into it. And so the representation that cost needs to be the reason to not move forward with protecting tenants, to me, sounds like we need to not regulate a market that is supposed to provide safe housing to humans for occupancy. And we should guarantee that there's no risk to it. And I just, there is no model for that. That is not industry. That is not economy. So if that's the argument, and I understand it goes back to diametrically opposed approaches, but it's a, we cannot guarantee no risk within any industry. And it just seems strange to request that.
Yeah, my name is Stuart Kazmarsik, and I spoke earlier. These ladies don't know poverty. I grew up in poverty, ten kids. We carried water two hundred yards.
No, he, I don't think you had your five minutes. Is that correct? Or you did come down? I'm sorry, one second, just point of order, because I'm not clear. If he spoke earlier, does he have to wait until?
He didn't. He did not speak earlier today.
I asked two questions.
He did. He had, he, he came down and he had two questions.
Two questions.
So does it matter if he didn't use his whole time? Does he still have to wait until everybody else has spoken?
I think that's really up to the chair of the meeting to decide how they would like to run it.
Go one minute, two minutes. Can you do it in one minute? You got it?
I've had probably forty, I had had probably forty to sixty units. Not one of my units has ever, have I ever charged what their standard rate that the city of Binghamton allows. But you know what's amazing? My taxes keep going up. You look at the buildings, you look at the city of Binghamton vehicles, you watch the people. They're working on a road. You have ten people working on a road that, I do blacktop. We do a job three times that big with three people. It's such a waste of money with government. You know, you don't realize this. You sit in here and you look at all this. You know, we pay for this. You know, us landlords are the ones that are paying for all of this right here. You know, who else pays for it? Sales tax, maybe? But us landlords are what's paying for the city, and the city abuses our money. You know, when you look and you see everything that the city's doing with vehicles and all this, it's such a waste of money. Let's be efficient. You, we shouldn't have people sleeping on the river. I agree. I call a code enforcement officer because I have a tenant that leaves twenty bags of garbage out. You know what they do? They send them a letter. If they don't take care of it, I have to take care of it. It's my obligation. It's not theirs.
Hello, okay. Both of these are on, so I was confused. Thank you for having the time to talk about this tonight. I wanted to share my experience as someone who has been renting for most of my life, but I just bought a house recently in Binghamton. And yeah, it's super expensive. It's super expensive to rent. It's super expensive to own a house. But what's great about owning a house is that your mortgage never changes, so you can plan for that for thirty years. Doesn't go up. You have improvements, you work on it, right? So I think that's an interesting perspective because when you are a tenant, you can't really control how much your landlord's gonna raise your rent. And I think that this good cause eviction law really does help protect folks who are on a budget. Um, and something that I I recognize as a great privilege now in my life to be able to enjoy. And I think that tenants should have that protection as well, especially, you know, costs of living goes up. And I totally believe that for landlords, it costs more money every year to make their homes um healthy for their tenants. So that's understandable. Um, but like others have mentioned, you know, as a landlord, that's an investment choice. And um typically, you know, if if you cannot keep up your investments, then you need to reprioritize your finances. And I don't think that's the tenant's fault or responsibility to a certain point. So just as someone who's always had to rent, now I own a house, I understand how expensive it is. I still um support this good cause eviction law to help protect tenants and their livelihood. So thank you for the time.
Hi, my name is Renee. Um, I want to speak in favor of good cause eviction protections. I think mainly just in the comments heard earlier today, there's been some kind of confusion about um sort of needing more time or consideration or wanting to talk to this sort of um imagined like both sides of an issue here. And I think just wanted to like reiterate that these issues are quite clear. Um, as others had said, uh, it is not a choice to need housing. That is something that like is needed to survive as a human being. It is a choice to gatekeep housing. Landlords do not provide services to people. They gatekeep something that people need. Um, and I think I really want to like point that, make that point clear. There's a choice that they make to extract basically the the sort of surplus income of people to pay for their existence, basically. Um, that's not something that they need. It is their choice to gatekeep something that every single person living in this community needs. Um, and so it's sort of ask, and when, and sort of this debate about good cause eviction, what I really want to have you guys consider is like, why in this sort of imagined conversation where we have to equally weigh both sides, is the side that is gatekeeping a human necessity the priority here? Um, and sort of as you guys as an elected body, really, the sort of priority of an elected government should be to protect people who are most marginalized and vulnerable um to these sort of broader external forces. Like landlords' excess wealth is not a priority. People getting kicked out on the street and sort of being left to their own devices uh for no fault of their own absolutely is something that this uh body does have the power to offer protections against and should uh, yeah, just do good cause and more. Yeah, landlords' property rights do not overrule the the needs of people to actually have safe homes. Like, that's so simple. That is the issue. You don't need, you have the data already to show why this is a protection to allow for people to have a bit, a little bit better stability. Yeah, past good cause. Like, you you know the issue. It's pretty clear. The people who are trying to oppose good cause want to maintain the power to evict people for all these sort of nonsense reasons. And really, it's nonsense. Simple as that. Protect tenants. That's kind of the the baseline. Uh, and you can go forward from here as well. Thanks.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all. And I just wanted to say that uh more legislation costs everybody more money. Look at history and you'll find out that's what the story is. I think landlords came here tonight to protect their good tenants. Hello, hello. Oh, hello. So I think a lot of landlords came here tonight to protect their good tenants. Good, bad, that's uh in the eye of the beholder, I suppose. Um, I don't care if you're black, white. I know money is green and everybody wants some. And you need to work for that. And landlords work hard to provide good places to live for all people. If you want to abuse that privilege, then so be it. But don't hang it all on the landlords. There's bad landlords. There's bad tenants. But I just wanted to say, more legislation is not the answer. I think uh curbing expenses, I think looking at more creative ways to create housing or the ability to get housing is where it's at. You know, use your heads. Think out of the box. Need some ideas? I'm a little nervous right now, but I got a hundred of them. Give me a call. I'm in the book. Chef Rachel in Exit Realty, Homeward Bound. Thank you for your time.
Lommy wants to say something.
I'm not a good speaker, so I'm trying to not long win this. I know that the good cause, everybody's feeling about the good cause. And one of the things is for the landlords is not having the rights that they have. This does not negate it. I can only speak for myself, not anyone on the council. I am a person that rents. Not only am I a person that rents, I do have a landlord who has been good to me. And at the same time, two things can exist that I would be considered possibly evicted, to be on an eviction list. I've had some things that's gone on with me that throughout that it would mostly break most people. My landlord is here today. I'm not gonna point him out. But he's been good to me so far, knowing my situation, knowing that I have uh had some situations, some hiccups that has been placed. Problem is, if you are already doing that and understanding that, then this should not sway you from any kind of way, if you already doing it. My landlord right now could evict me and have every right to do so. I know that. I I, I'm at, I'm at his will. But it seems like his will has been somewhat godly. That's what that has been. He didn't have to, he didn't have to do that. Didn't have to. He could just put me right out, just because I, I, I have missed payments and how far I'm behind. But because of that, if you're already doing some of these things and if you're already could, already making corrections and preparing things, because my landlord has done that, even without the payments that it, that has been made. And I'm scrounging to get payments, to try to make sure he gets the payments on time or at least whatever they're trying to pay. If you're already doing that, I don't understand why you're here. If you're already doing that, why are you here? It involves a certain amount of humanity, which my landlord has. And though it has been accused of not having. It's just if, it involves a lot of humanity. It involves the fact of what you call Christian, not national nationalism Christianity that you might have right now. It involves a certain amount of Christianity that you claim to have, which is meaning that when somebody is down and somebody is out, you stand in the gap. That's what this, what Christian, Christianity is about. You stand in the gap. And so far, what I'm hearing, ain't nobody standing in the gap. And the fact is, is that with my landlord doing that, I'm doing the best I can trying to make sure. Like I said, Scott, he's got a sword of Democles over his head, trying to make a decision on where it goes. So if you are already doing this, if you already, this good cause is not for you. It's for the ones that's the bad apples. If you want to do something, take some of that and start going and starting, get rid of the people that you know are not doing that. Actually taking an action, it may be a landlord action, to go against other landlords who are not doing their job. So I, like I said, I don't know why, why anybody wants to put a pin in this. Uh, and maybe there are some data that could be, needed to be done, but this, from what I'm seeing from the other cities, is kind of like a test run. Ownselves. They're trying to figure out how to work it out too. And again, this is just a tool. This doesn't complete everything. It's a tool. And like many tools, if you got the only tool that you can have, such as a butter knife to work a screw, that's what you got. So you work it until you can get more tools to help come along. Again, I know I'm an alarmist. Most people think I'm an alarmist. Most people think I don't know what I'm talking about. Most people are talking about the fact of trying to compare poverty. Poverty is not something to be compared. It is something that is just an effect of habit of a situation that has been placed upon people many times. Or privileged enough. But poverty, that's it. There you go. Make opportunities. So, again, there you go.
Thanks, Lomny. We, I mean, last call for folks who are here who would like to speak. We do have some public comment that was, you, you did, you did take your time.
Why can't we give him another two?
Well, it's one minute.
One minute.
Okay, well, if you gave somebody one minute, why can't we get here?
Yeah, one minute.
I just want to say um that my experience in that.
Not everyone can hear you. That is why we use the mics.
This mic right there, sir. Use that, use that.
Hello? I just want to say in my experience, um, I don't, I can't speak about other landlords, but in my experience, uh, I most definitely provide a service, a convenience to people who don't want to be inconvenienced with all the details of taking care of property, okay? Paying those taxes, paying the mortgage, keeping the property up. My tenants come and go. They live their lives. My kids are out there shoveling their driveway. Okay, so don't tell me, please, that we don't provide a service. Maybe other landlords don't. But we most definitely provide a service. Thank you.
We do have the.
There's one more. There's somebody.
It is not currently set on an agenda.
No.
No.
The the earliest regularly scheduled business meeting is the last week in December. I think we get January, excuse me, sorry, living in the past. No, um, is the last week in January, the Wednesday. And I'm forgetting the date. It might be the twenty eighth. Twenty eighth?
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, the twenty ninth at a regular business meeting would be the earliest that this could happen, but it's not necessarily on the agenda yet.
We, okay, last for real this time. Uh, last call for any additional comments. We do have some that came in that will be read by the clerk.
Dear councilmember, I own many properties in the city of Binghamton, spread out between districts one, two, three, four, and six. And I myself have lived in the city of Binghamton for about ten years. You probably don't know me, and that's likely because I am a good landlord. I take care of my properties and I treat my tenants well, like so many other non-headline-making mom-and-pop local landlords do. The city needs more landlords like myself, not fewer. If you could please take into consideration my below thoughts about the harsh realities that will accompany the passing of the good cause eviction legislation. Number one, voting yes to this law is a vote for guaranteed maximum annual rent increases. This law establishes a use-it-or-lose-it system for rent increases. I have so many tenants that have never received a rent increase under my ownership. Now I will feel forced to increase rent to the maximum that I can every year because if I don't do it, I'll forever lose that opportunity to get rents closer to market. So it must be taken advantage of every year. Number two, voting yes to this law is a vote to increase homelessness. Previously, I was very open to giving people a chance who may not meet my tenant qualification criteria. But now because they will be tenants forever, I will need to screen them as if they will stay forever. So never again will I take a chance on someone who may not deserve it. This will make it significantly harder for renters to find housing. Number three, voting yes to this law is a vote to halting all improvements to properties. It will no longer be worth the investment and effort to make improvements as landlords will never be able to charge enough rent to afford them. This will lead to a loss of jobs and lead to the worsening of the already severely outdated and deteriorating housing supply. Number four, voting yes to this law is a vote to punish good landlords who have kept their rents below market. I have many tenants who currently pay substantially below market, oftentimes five hundred dollars, six hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars, even a thousand dollars below market rent. Under this law, these tenants will get to stay for decades, if not forever, at extremely low rent as I'll never be able to increase them enough to catch up to market rates. You're punishing me for trying to be a good landlord and a nice person. Number five, voting yes to this law is a vote to increase crime in Binghamton. Drug dealers, criminals, offenders, and more will realize that if they move to Binghamton, they can live forever without risk of eviction. I'm sure all the people who have never been a landlord will say, well, the law still says those people can be evicted. Let me ask you something. Have you ever tried to get a paying tenant out on bad behavior? I think before you pass this law, I think before you pass this law, each of you should try and go through that process, and then you will understand. Number six, voting yes to this law is a vote to decrease the value of every property in the city and discourage investment into this community. If this law passes, I will never again purchase another property in the city of Binghamton guaranteed. I hope you take into consideration all of these very real consequences that will occur if this law is passed. As a local landlord, I would think the city would be my partner, but in recent years, the city has instead chose to demonize landlords, both the good ones and the bad ones. Instead of going after all landlords, why not pass laws that target the bad ones and encourage the good ones? Unfortunately, if this law passes, my family and I will move out of Binghamton and start selling our properties here, likely to slum lords, since no good landlord will want to operate here. I've tried my best to be both a good person and a good landlord here in Binghamton, but it seems clear and obvious that Binghamton doesn't want people like me. Thank you for your consideration. Good mom and pop local landlord. Good morning. My name is Amy Trevino, and I am a resident of Binghamton's West Side. I'm sending this email because I wanted to be able to voice my opinion in today's town hall on the good cause eviction. But I'm unfortunately unable to attend in person. I would appreciate it very much if this email could be read out today. As a graduate student, renter, and member of the Binghamton community, I am concerned about the increasing costs of rent in this county. And I witnessed firsthand how this impacts the most vulnerable people in the city. I've personally spoken to dozens of people on account of my work as an immigration advocate and housing organizer, and I have witnessed firsthand how these prices hurt people. I've been told that families with young children have been forced to choose between paying their rent or buying groceries. I have seen people being forced from their homes because of their justified complaints on the quality of their housing. And I have seen people made homeless in the cold winter months because they were not able to secure housing. I can tell you that as someone who has been illegally evicted, it is an extremely traumatic experience. The memory of watching all of my childhood toys on the curb alongside extremely important documents such as my social security card and hospital records will never fade. I am one of the lucky ones. Someone took my mother and I in, and we did not have to suffer the cold. The same is not true of the many children who are shuffled in and out of shelters and hotels. I firmly believe that no child or person should have to go through this. I understand that many of the people coming to the town hall today may have some complaints about how this affects their ability to evict problematic tenants. But I feel obligated to point out that this measure does not make it legal to trash a landlord's apartment. All that good cause eviction law says is that landlords should not be able to evict tenants in retaliation. I know of many people who live in houses that are quite frankly dangerous to their health, and I don't think that it is a bad thing at all to have more stringent protections for tenants. As a tenant, I would be relieved to know that I could voice my concerns about a property without fearing being evicted. If as Mayor Cram says, potential landlords are off put by that, then I say good riddance. There are far too many slum lords here who want to capitalize from subpar housing. I believe in the potential of this community, having lived here five years, and I know that it can only be achieved if people have quality, affordable housing. I implore the city council members to approve this measure. Thank you all for your time.
Okay, I think that's the end of our town hall. I want to thank those of you who came uh to speak and to share. I do need a motion to adjourn.
The motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll say.
Robert, okay.
All in favor?
All right, motion made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again, folks. Take care.
I don't know if it's an issue issue that committee members, because technically I think.